This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, I'm gonna actually use the gavel for a change. All right, folks. All right, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for tonight, Tuesday, November 7th, at a few minutes after 6 o'clock. We had a little technical glitch here, and we will start off by standing, please, and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance exists through land and property, and we have a state of our area. And to review the law with which it stands, and when they see individuals involved in any of these issues.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a quorum tonight. We're expecting Stephen, I think. Oops, why do I have an echo?
Mute the TV. The TV's gotta be muted.
Okay. Anyway, we're expecting Stephen, I think, and then Joy is going to join us remotely if we can connect with her. So in spite of that, we do have a quorum. This is really annoying. Okay, so let's start off on our agenda. We have, per usual, open time for the public. Is anybody here open time for the public for an issue that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We have, actually, the first river of business is a public hearing with Eversource, and this is regarding a location at 33 Manhan Road to install six new fully-owned poles on Manhan Road, Southampton.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Could I have a second? All right. Even if Joy is not here, let's do a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Lumberaye.
Valleyaye. Owlzaye. Okay. The hearing is now open. Here she is. Very good. Thanks, Joy. Perfect. She knows she's there. Okay. Good. Ed, would you like to read the purpose statement? Or shall I? Here comes Stephen.
I'll actually mute it right now.
No, she's not now. Okay. All right, I'm gonna read the purpose then, I think. So we have a petition for the sole pole locations by the Board of Licensed Commissioners of the City of Southampton, Mass. Eversource and Verizon New England request permission to locate a line of poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting features to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public way, 33 Manhan Road. Eversource is requesting permission to install six fully-owned poles on Manhan Road. These poles will be located approximately 20 feet off center line of road. The pole line will begin approximately 50 feet southeast of the existing pole 2515 and continue northwest to meet back up with pole 45-4-1. This pole line will be used to provide service to 33 Manhan Road. The current service to the home is from the right-of-way and is currently an aerial trespass. Wherefore, they pray that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint or identical locations for and permission to construct and maintain a line of poles, wires, and cables together with such sustaining and protecting features as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan field hereof marked 12553910. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each set of poles for the fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes. Eversource by Jason Ferraro. The date is actually August 1st, 2023. So I believe we have Mr. Ferraro here. Would you please come forward?
How's it going?
Yeah, just introduce yourself and keep that tight.
Jason Ferraro, Eversource.
Okay, yes, we are being recorded, so the mic is important for our public access TV folks. Yep, go ahead.
Yep. So we're just looking for permission to install that pole line in the public right-of-way.
Well, could you describe it a little bit?
Sure.
We have a map in here. I'm not sure that I understand it, and I assume a lot of the people here in the audience may or may not have seen it. I don't know.
We don't? Didn't get one?
Yeah, I don't know. We got one.
It's part of the pack, it's not the agenda.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Sure. So it'll...
So if you could describe it, at least?
Yeah, I could try to do that, or I could pass this one around, however you want to do it. The pole line's gonna cross the road, stay on the left side of the road if you're going north. Approximately 150-foot spans to meet back up with the existing pole that is there, 45-4-1, so we can feed the customer, and we're not aerial trespassing of 34 Manhan Road.
So you'd be maintaining the other set of poles?
Yep, the right-of-way would stay where it is.
Cool. All right. So there is already some existing poles, but there is just this one location that has an aerial situation?
Correct.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. The only way to feed that house is to come down the public right-of-way to get them proper power.
So can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So this is, these are an existing house, 33 Manhan's existing?
Correct.
What's causing this?
We don't have the right to run the power line over the customer's property. The customer complained. We don't have rights for the power, so now we have to find a new way to feed the customer.
Okay, so the owner of...
34 Manhan.
Lodged a complaint, which is triggering this?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Hey, Steven, question?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Then I think I would assume some of these folks here might be for that?
Yep, we go good and bad, good and bad, good and bad.
Yeah, right, exactly. So anybody who would like to speak in favor of this, we'll take those first. If somebody would like to speak in favor, we'd ask you to come up to the mic, give your name and address, and what you have to say, anyone? Yes, please, come on up.
So I'm Justin Violet. I live at 34 Manhan Road. I'm the one who had called in about the aerial trespass. We're actually in hopes of Eversource being able to move everything to the road. Over the past year, since I have lived in the home, we had a fire due to a tree coming down. There's tree wire halfway through to where it's in the grass area, and then it continues on with non-tree wire. Tree had fallen, hit the wires, landed in the grass, caught on fire. Southampton Limited Fire Department, there was windy. They told my wife, "Pack your bags, you're probably gonna have to evacuate your home." We then, at Christmas time, we had a tree come down. It sat on the wires for multiple days. Nobody ever came to do anything about it because it's tough to see. People were unaware of what it's holding up. They finally came out. They cut it, but it took a long time because nobody wanted to come on our property because it's so soft. The tree guys were like, "We can't drive out there, we'll get stuck." So there's just a lot with it, so then the aerial trespass. And I was like, "I can't have this. There's so many big trees around it." So it was just time to call it in, hopefully move forward. The power lines are in the road the whole entire way up. It's just this last little stretch that all of a sudden they continue on going behind two of my neighbors, actually three in total.
What's the approximate distance between 34 and 33 Manhan Road?
Ah, so he's all the way across the street. So the run through my property is about 200-something feet, I bet? So you just get to the road.
So he's across from you, though?
Yeah, he's, yep, he's on the opposite side of the road. That is correct.
So...
Yep, question.
So does this solution meet your needs?
Well, at least removes aerial trespass, which removes some of the risk because his power line runs through the woods, so there's a lot of trees.
Yep.
It would be better if Eversource moved all of the power lines to the road the rest of the way up and got rid of the right-of-way that's existing. They're already gonna be cutting the majority of the trees just to get this one power line moved. So now Eversource will be having to maintain two different sets of power lines by just leaving part of it in the road like that. So from a cost standpoint for Eversource, for the maintenance and the reliability of their utility lines, they'd be better off to just move all of the power to the road. Because from my understanding as well, that power is what is needed to go to the dam, which does have a backup generator, but they use that motor to be able to operate and function the gate valve that's up there to control the flow of water in heavy rains or anything like that. So a bad storm, how long can the generator run? How long does it take to get up the road? Plus, by Eversource moving these poles and doing this work, they're gonna trim trees that have been marked for death for over 10 years. So we're actually gonna get trees cut on our road by the utility company, whether they spend the money on our road or they spend the money on somebody else's road. The budget's there that Eversource is gonna spend every year.
And just for clarity again, is the aerial trespass just in one area, or there's...
It's just one. So that is the only house on that side of the road from once the power lines leave the roadway.
Okay, I'm just trying to visualize this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, not necessarily for you, but if I could ask Jason to just explain this map a little better.
Yeah, thank you.
Jason. So am I interpreting this right? This is the existing, right?
This is the right-of-way. This is your road.
Yep.
This is the pole that's here. This is the line that comes across Mr. Violet's property.
Okay.
So we're gonna come out here, feed this.
And this would go along the public road?
Correct. The right-of-way would stay the right-of-way. It would be substantially more costly for us to move all of this into the roadway. Not just poles. You're talking services, and other services have to be moved. Transformation has to be moved.
So adding, adding the new poles, right?
Correct.
Along this side?
Yep.
To get, his house is on this side?
Correct. So here's the, you can see in color, this is the roadway.
Yep.
This is our pole line. This is his house.
I got you. Okay.
Could we share some maps, maybe, with... Yeah. I don't know if the maps were out on...
Well, I don't have like a projector to show you. This is the roadway. This is our right-of-way. This is the house that is currently being fed through the aerial trespass. So we would then go down the roadway to pick up this house. The three-phase power, say here, rolling tip and single-phase power, just the minimum to feed this house.
The roadway, is it, it's a dirt road? Is it a dirt road, not the main road?
No, the main road.
That's main.
Yeah, that's Manhan Road. That's an aerial view there.
And you said the poles are gonna be on the left side of the road going up to the main?
Correct.
Only to the point of his house?
Correct.
And just to feed his house?
Correct.
Six, six poles.
Six poles on the side where the river is?
Correct.
Okay.
And you're saying a lot of trees are present, no?
Yep.
Yep, they'd have to clear out a small portion for the single phase. It'd be a much more substantial portion for the three-phase.
And if this didn't happen, the result would be...
Well, we'd have to find a way to feed power to the neighbor that...
Is requesting them.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Next.
I live at 22 Manhan Road, Jesse Turgeon.
Yeah.
I'm at the fork of the road, if you look at the map.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
I'm at the fork of the road, if you look at the map.
Introduce yourself.
Jesse Turgeon, from 22 Manhan Road.
Thank you.
I'm at the fork of the road. I'm for the poles, all the poles being moved to the street. Now, if they don't do that, I'm surrounded by poles from both sides. The value of my house will go way down. Nobody's gonna buy a house with telephone, with poles both sides of the house. You know, that's awful. That's ugly. It's a scenic road. But, you know.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for, for or against? Do we have anybody for? Don't hear that there's anybody for yet, okay?
I'd like to speak at some point where I'm near the...
Okay. Okay, we'll let this person come first. Yep.
Hi, Allison Wondriscu. I'm 11 Manhan Road. It's a small road. We're pretty much all here. The road was designated as a scenic road, scenic byway at some point perhaps in the late 90s. I did not look that up before I came. The reason, my understanding, is that the poles were originally placed to the east of Jesse's house was because of the scenic designation. There's beautiful trees there and an overlay across the road to maintain that. It's that the houses on the east are away from the road. On the left of the road, there's some trees, and then there's a decrease. There's like a, it's not really a cliff, but the land goes down to the river, and it's all river. So I have a couple of concerns. One is if you're taking a lot of the trees down, we're losing carbon. But also, I would worry that you would get more erosion going down into the river, and that could be a problem. Number two, it has a scenic designation for a reason. It's beautiful. Lots of people with the pandemic have come up. They park at the bottom, they walk to the top, they walk down. It's a beautiful road, and so I would, you know, worry about that. And also, those poles have been there since the late 90s, so what is that, 25 years? I'm not quite sure why all of a sudden this is a problem. So just wanna voice those concerns.
Okay, thank you.
David Corey, 53 Thomer Road. Our own property up there. The trees, at least a dozen of the major trees along that section of road are dead. They've been marked, like I believe it was said earlier, they've been marked for cutting for a decade. Nobody's cut them. There's more damage in there than that. If you look at it horticulturally, most of those trees that are leaning over the road that are so beautiful are going to come down into the road at town expense. They have come down numerous times already. If you have a garden, you need to prune it, you need to keep after it. To keep the beauty and maintain it, it's gonna require pruning and trimming. That's going to be at sound of Southampton's expense. The utility company will cut, and they'll maintain that forever. When the trees are cut and pruned back, you aren't gonna notice, I defy anybody a month later to tell me where the trees were barring, looking at the stumps. It's not gonna hurt the scenic beauty of the road. It'll be just as beautiful afterwards. That's...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, anyone? This lady back here? Yes, please. Just stand in line there. Well, we're from the line, that's fine. Been sitting, do it.
Hi, so my name is Marilyn Tarjan, and I live at 22 Manhan Road. So I am all for having the poles moved so we can properly feed 33 Manhan Road. But I would also request that, when they do that, that they would change the easement and take the poles off our property and put them to the street as well. The reason why they ended up in the middle of the property in the first place was because there was a lot of back and forth when we purchased our property, that people didn't want the trees cut. When that happened, we were pretty much, we had put some expense into the property as it was, so we decided to allow them to move the easement from the middle of the property and put it to the back, which resulted in a huge, I don't know if people remember, there was a beautiful tree line at the back of the property, our property. And we had to cut down so many beautiful trees at that point just to put that line there. Since then, we've been there for 30 years, and 99% of the trees in the front are already dead. There is no maintenance. All the trees along our stone wall now are dead and ready to fall, as been stated. I've seen the marks that Eversource had put on the road where they're tentatively maybe putting their poles, and looks to me like they won't be eliminating a lot of trees, not as described, and a few of them are dead. My suggestion is, is allow this, but also remove the easement from the back of the property, put it all on the street where it belongs. Because we're in the process also of looking into have our septic system replaced. So if this is gonna be done, we would like for it to be done before we decide to replace the septic system because the easement runs right through our property. So if we put a new septic system, Eversource will be trimming by hand because there will be no way for them to get onto our property to maintain that easement. And it has happened in the past where we have power outages, and because of the land being so wet, they couldn't bring their trucks onto our property. Even, I think, this past winter, it took a day or so for them to get proper. They had to walk up the street and check the power line because a lot of the properties were too wet. So my suggestion is to coordinate this with the removal of the easement that's in the back of the property. Put it to the street where it belongs. The whole street has poles on it.
Yep.
This one little section does not. It's in our yards. Take it out of our yards, put it on the street, and we'll be happy to help.
Okay. Could I ask, Jason, could you maybe address that a little bit, just as a, or someone from Eversource, whoever else is here? Yeah?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Fuller.
Sorry, come again.
My name is Matthew Fuller. I'm a coworker of Jason's. We're both engineering designers out of the Springfield office. As you guys are aware, we have an existing easement for the three-phase pole line that runs behind the properties on Manhan Road that feeds the dam. When we talk in terms of the extent of the three-phase supply that feeds the dam versus the extent of the single-phase supply that we're looking to move to resolve the aerial trespass issue, they are night and day. It is not simply a matter of, you know, moving everything out to the road as an apples-to-apples comparison. It is a substantial amount of work. It will be a substantial, bigger impact on the canopy if we were to relocate poles from the right-of-way where they reside now out to the public way, all the way down to the end of that road. The trimming requirements for the three-phase supply is substantially more than the trimming requirements for a single-phase supply. And again, it would double the length of that pole line. It would not be six poles. It would be all the way down to the end of that road, where right now we have no facilities on the, on the street. As I understand it, when this job took form, we did seek an easement across the parcel where we encumber with the overhead line now, and that was rejected. That would have allowed us, without making any changes, cutting any trees, what have you, to resolve this, but this is really the only option we have to address the aerial trespass, to cut that line down and build something where we have adequate supply to the house on the left-hand side of the street. So we do have a permanent easement for the pole line that runs behind everybody's houses. I know you mentioned septic systems, what have you. There is a review process for encroachments into that easement area, so we would not have septic systems or anything else, any improvements built into that area where our easement resides without written permission from Eversource. So if we go back there, we're not, you know, bringing a line truck or heavy vehicles over, you know, anybody's septic systems or otherwise. So if there's any questions I can answer while I'm here, I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
I do have a question, because we're talking about scenic roads, and my understanding is those have to go through the planning board. Has the planning board been approached on this topic?
This apparently was already designated a scenic road.
Yes, buddy, so if you read the Master of Law about scenic roads, any, you know, it's right here, if you wanna take a look at it. It just says that anybody has, if there are changes, then it has to be approved by the planning board.
Approved by the planning board, okay.
So I'm just making sure that we're following our town's policies.
Okay. I could be reading it wrong.
Good point. I don't know. That's a possibility? If it's already been designated a scenic road? Have you approached the planning board at all, or anybody?
No, to be very honest with you, normal protocol for use of public way is to seek a permission specifically from the Select Board. If there is a scenic road designation that requires Southampton Planning Board approval, then we would need to address that before we move forward, which we would be more than happy to.
I'll ask Ed to read this. Let's see as far as I am sure. Okay, yeah, all right. Thanks. Other questions? So the notion of moving the... You want me to do it?
I'll have to go back to town.
Sorry, guys. The notion of moving the one resident's poles from the back of their house toward the front, that is not a possibility, is what you're saying?
I mean, we can build anything. So to be quite honest with you, I mean, anything is a possibility, but where we have a permanent easement in place for facilities to reside, it is solely so that we do not, or we are not forced to relocate at the ratepayers' expense. So if there was private funding to bring that forward and relocate out to the public way, sure, we'd be happy to entertain that and have that discussion. We can vet it out and provide a cost for it, but where permanent easements reside, unless there is, you know, an extenuating circumstance where, you know, we would not be able to keep the facilities in an area where we have a permanent easement to be there, we would not be seeking to relocate that line out to the public way, especially not on the ratepayers' side.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that answer.
Thank you.
I think, sir, you'd like to say something? Careful.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question if Nate...
Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Bruce Coombs, and I live at 33 Manhan Road. And I'd like to first ask the question if Nate Harrison happens to be here tonight.
Nate Harrison?
He's located at 17 Manhan Road, and it was my understanding that he was gonna be here tonight.
Okay. I don't recognize him. If somebody is Nate Harrison, please identify yourself. I guess not. Okay.
Okay. I've lived at 33 Manhan Road for a long time, approximately 40 years, and I've been there when the issue of a scenic road came about. I was also there when the Manhan Pipeline was feeding all the residents on Manhan Road and down into Westfield with raw water, and we formed an association to, to work with the town and the city of Holyoke because they sent letters to all the residents saying they were gonna turn off the water in a short period of time because it was not chlorinated. So we formed a group and were successful in getting the town to pay a third of the cost of the wells in the city of Holyoke, to pay another third, and the residents who were affected to pay a third. So this dates back quite a while. The, I'm familiar with the area because of surveying that a company has done over the past several years, and the road that runs, splits off from Manhan Road is called Osden Road. It's a dirt road that goes, used to go up to a couple of houses that were up there, and there's cell holes up there. And then the power line has run, as people have described, behind some of the houses, or at least two of the houses. I'm not sure how it affects the house opposite me at 34 Manhan Road as far as a trespass goes because I, as far as I know, the poles have been there since I moved there 40-plus years ago. So I think it would be, it would be helpful if the power company were to provide a plan showing where the poles exist now, where the permanent easement is now, and which, which poles are gonna, where the new poles are gonna be installed, and also in relation to the houses, show the houses so that we could all look at it and see what people are talking about, whether it's in front of one house or another house, or it's gonna be removed or moved from the entire right-of-way, whether it's a permanent right-of-way or temporary right-of-way. It's my understanding that the poles that are there are there by right of Eversource, but on the other hand, maybe that's not the case. But that should be determined and shown on a plan that could be visualized by all the people who are gonna make a decision regarding this, this move. I don't particularly have an objection to moving it, but the other thing that the representative from Eversource didn't mention was the trees. Mr. Corey mentioned that there were some dead ones. It's true, there's some dead ones, but there are some live ones, and I believe most of the trees that would have to be removed are in front of my property. And there's about a half a dozen of them. Some are 40 or more years old, and some are in good shape and some are in poor shape. Manhan Road also has several trees that are in very poor shape, and I think the town needs to, I'm not sure if there's a tree warden now or not. I haven't been involved with the town for many years, but they need to take a look at some of the trees and remove them. As you drive up Manhan Road on the right-hand side, just before you get to Mrs. Wondriscu's property, there's a dead tree that looks like it's gonna fall over any day. There's a dead tree that, as you go further up Manhan Road, just before my property, there's a dead tree that fell over, and it's been laying on the side of the road. And it impacts people from the town who might want to snowplow. So that should be removed as well. So basically, I think that it's hard to for people to visualize all of what has been talked about without having some type of a a plan. I'm not suggesting that I create it. I think Eversource needs to create it, but that would be very helpful to everybody.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we have one or two more comments, perhaps? And yes, please. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Connie Rodd. I've lived on Manhan Road for 43 years. I am one of the people that had it declared a scenic road. At the time when the poles went in behind the houses on Manhan Road, the then-tree warden had gone up and had marked about 60 trees that were going to come down, and that was where my previous neighbor and I said, "We're not going to have anything left." The card that we got in the mail way back when, it actually says on it too that erect a line of poles and also underground conduits and cables up to 33 Manhan Road. One of my questions is, we always did have a tree warden in town. If there's lots of dead trees on the road, why wasn't that handled? As part of whoever the tree warden is or was, that's their job. If there's dead trees, they should be removed. Like Bruce said, you know, there's dead trees, there's live trees. We have a beautiful road. It's gorgeous. We need more information. We need maps. We need to know what's... you know, this is what we got, and this is what we got tonight. No maps, no nothing. So you guys have been talking, and we're going, "Yeah, we don't have that. We don't have that." How much of this are we going to remember when we leave here? Probably not a lot. Okay? If the tree person in town was doing their job, these dead trees would not be sitting on Manhan Road. Nobody that lives on our street is so hard to deal with that if they said, "Oh, we've got dead trees we need to take down." Nobody's going to protest. We're reasonable people. We've lived there for a long time. It's a beautiful, it's a quiet road. That's why we live there. And we want it to stay that way. So, you know, if Eversource is going to go in, and Verizon is also mentioned on this, N-Star doing business as Eversource as well as Verizon, there seems to be a lot more going on than what we're knowing is happening here. And, you know, nobody's that unreasonable. I mean, can totally understand why the Turgeons would like all that junk gone from the back of their house. You know, I mean, it... we're all reasonable. But if it was done where they let us know what was going on, this is what we need to do, and this is why we need to do it, I really, I can't see that anybody's going to go, "Oh, no, you shouldn't do that." I mean, my big concern is I'm going to drive up that road to my house, and it's not going to be the scenic road anymore. Okay? You know, do it, but do it right. You know, is it going to be somebody that comes in and they're just going to chop everything down? Or is somebody going to come in and say, "Okay, we could leave this. We could leave that"? You know, there's a lot of things to be considered. And, you know, like I said, we're all reasonable. We all want to get along. Nobody wants to have issues with your neighbors. But, you know, be honest with us, you know? I mean, the people that live in the log cabin that couldn't be here tonight. She told me, because I texted her, "Are you coming?", and she said, "Well, they came and they were marking. They were going to put a pole in front of our house." That should not be anything that happens. Suddenly somebody shows up and they're marking something, and you don't know anything about it, and it's right in front of where they keep their birds. You know, this is what pisses people off. And this is why people dig their heels in and say, "Screw you! No, we don't want that." Nobody wants to be that way. You know, be reasonable with us. You know, deal with us as intelligent people, and you're not going to have a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could, just for the purposes of the audience, so your tree wardens are elected individual separately, so you vote for him? It happens to be him that's in there. There's a budget line on him of $15,000, and after you clean up what happens with the snowstorms and the natural trees that falls, maybe we can cut three trees a year down on the property. So one of the issues is that line item is underfunded. But are we really going to support a $200,000 line item to cut trees? Just informational purposes.
But speaking with all the houses that have gone up in town, and they're not little houses, they're big ones.
I'm just... No, no, I know. I'm just giving you information.
It's just information.
You asked about, you know, he's elected. He's got a budget line item.
Come to some conclusion here.
The... I have a question. Ed, I have a... sorry, Chris, I have a question for Eversource.
Yes, go ahead.
Could you just confirm, did you rule out the possibility of underlying cables running all the way up there to feed that house instead of putting in six poles?
So the roadway that is in place now, when we walked this approximately a year ago, when the white paint was put on the street and wooden stakes were put in, which are also painted, that illustrate from, you know, a walk-the-road perspective, if you will. We looked at the condition of the road, and it is essentially brand-new. There was very little wear on it. It appeared that it had been paved recently. We looked at the overhead as an option because it's the least intrusive to build out that way. All of our facilities in that area are overhead, and the reason that you have the underground conduits, what have you, written into the petition is that it's boilerplate language. As you guys know from petitions with Verizon, if it is not on the drawing of what we propose, there is no permission for it. So while the language may have extenuating options in it, our proposal does not. So we are seeking specifically permission for poles and overhead facilities with the appurtenances, which are the anchor guys and PISA's that hold the poles in place. I have been with Northeast Utilities, formerly... excuse me, Eversource, formerly Northeast Utilities, in both Massachusetts and Connecticut for nearly 20 years. The layout that you see before you was my design. I walked that roadway three separate occasions, once during the winter, once during the summer, once during the fall, to observe what that road looked like when the trees had leaves, what it looked like without them, and every which way in between. We are held to design standards for ice ratings, wind ratings, what have you, soil conditions. We span no more than about a 200-foot run, and I played with this every way I could to minimize the impact to the roadway canopy, obviously observing that there were no facilities there prior to the proposal that you have before you. With the stone walls that have but the public way, all of our facilities, when we petition the town for permission for a project like this, they have to remain in the public way. And that means that the span of wire between the poles has to be in the public way. We cannot venture over onto any private property without a permanent easement for it, which is why we're in the situation that we're in now. A long time ago, when that overhead line was put in back there, it may have been just simply done with a handshake agreement with the property owner at the time. I mean, I can't speak to it. I wasn't a part of that, but, you know, we run into circumstances like this periodically. So the only way really to resolve that without a permanent easement on that property is to physically remove that service, and to do that, because of the distance away from where our facilities are, we have to bring high-voltage primary to a point of transformation to then re-feed that customer. If we were to look at putting this underground, it is... it's completely opening up that roadway. The cost, the impact, is substantially more than what the overhead option would be, and it would not be something that we'd be... not an option we'd be looking to pursue.
Okay. Gotcha. Yep. Steven?
I'm not sure that I understand how you've explored all of our options to resolve longstanding trespass.
What do you mean?
It seems to me the issue is you have to service one customer, but for many years, there's been trespass across another customer.
Correct.
What are the options other than running this long line down the public right-of-way? It's existing. How many ownerships previously? What are your options in order to service the landowner?
So the customer on... Customer on the left-hand side of the street.
Right.
We have to take down the 120-240 volt overhead feed from the existing right-of-way to the pole that's in front of his house. That has to... that has to be taken out to mitigate the aerial trespass. We have facilities that come from an easement that cross a third-party parcel to serve another customer. So that piece of conductor does not benefit the house that it crosses to get back to the public way to serve the customer across the street. I don't know how many times that house has changed ownership. It... that point is kind of irrelevant because regardless of who owns it or how many times it's changed hands, if we don't have a permanent easement on that parcel, then we are out of bounds, and it is up to us to correct that. So in order to provide adequate service for the house across the street, it is a much longer run to come up the public way, and it's certainly not something we were looking to present, because it is a big project for ultimately a single customer. But without that permanent easement, we cannot come from an existing line closer to the home. We have to build one to get to it, because there is no other venue or avenue to get from the public way to that customer.
If you were to bury the line in its current location where it is trespass?
It would still require a permanent easement, whether it's above grade or below.
Understood. And would... what do you consider your prospects of negotiating that easement if you committed to below ground?
So that negotiation has already taken place, not for a below ground, but to cross that parcel. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, you were contacted to seek an easement on the property.
Please come on up to the mic.
The property's really never changed hands. My wife and I purchased it out from her brother. It was left to her and her brother. Her grandparents were the ones who had built it, the mom and the brother. So basically, it's always essentially been in my wife's family. So to put it underground, to put it in other words, there's two lots. So this line is in one of the lots. So there's already one easement, right, for the line. In order to give Eversource the ability to access this line whenever they want to, I would have to give another easement, and by doing that, that piece of property now becomes just a piece of grass. There's not much left. There's already an easement for the Holyoke Water Department. Then there's the overhead electric easement. So if I add another easement to get across the street, what's the price of land in Southampton? What if my two kids decide they don't want to live in Southampton someday? It's a lot of money. Would anybody here want to give up? If you had two acres and you wanted to sell an acre, anybody here willing to just give up an acre of land? Probably not. And I do want to mention, too, with a lot of myself, I know David, because no tree trimming's really been done on our road, because Eversource's poles aren't in that condition, I don't know how many times I've cut trees out of the way because our Public Works Department is strapped, and, you know, I know somebody from the town, and I text him, "Hey, Manhan Road's open. I already cut a tree, moved it out of the way. David's brought his loader down, moved it out of the way." A lot of people that are concerned with this, and they say, "Oh, it's a scenic road." A lot of people saying it's a scenic road, though. They live in the portion where the poles are already on the road, and tree maintenance is a lot better. They don't live on the end where the poles are not in the road. So, but that's the part with the land, anyway. You know, nobody wants to give up any more land than they already have to in today's age.
Okay, understood.
So...
Dan?
Do you want to turn number comment for the public, or?
One last comment, and we really do need to move on. Okay.
Bruce Coombs again, 33 Manhan Road. I can't speak for Nate Harrison, but we have had a recent conversation regarding the proposal that's before you. I can also say that I was out on my property when the person from the Tree Service that was that was going to be cutting the trees walked by, and he was marking them, and we had a conversation, so I found out then what was being proposed, and the trees that he had marked, I looked at. He also said that if the trees were cut in front of my property, that I would be entitled to have the wood or the firewood, or any whoever's property the trees have but. So if that project... if this project moves forward, I would want the trees, and I believe that... I can't speak for the... for Mr. Harrison, but he's in the tree business, and we have agreed that we could work out something relative to the removal of the trees if they're placed where we would like to have them placed after they're cut. So if it goes that far, I would like the opportunity to be able to talk with the Electric Company and/or the people who are going to be cutting the trees. I neglected that when I first spoke, but that was one of the issues that I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The very last one. Thank you.
David Corey again. For whatever reason, the utility company is failing to mention the other option that's been listed. There was another option. I've talked to probably at least six different individuals in the utility company, and I've worked my way up the food chain there. There's suddenly there's... Well, I'll come to that in a second. The other option is to... I don't know how much you people are aware of what's actually happening here. Seventy or eighty years ago, the utility company was... that was all cleared land. It was easier for the utility company to run the power line to up Manhan Road, off the road through the fields. At the time, they just let it go. Easements were written by the utility company. Two-thirds of that road now has the poles on the street. The poles leave the street into that what was a field. It's all woods now. It's largely, it's grown over. The utility company, some members of it, told me that it would be more effective to move all of the poles into the street for the entire utility line running up. Some members of the utility company seem to think that it's a consequence to the rate payers. I fail to see where the utility company has ever given much care to the rate payers. That money is divided up however it goes. Regardless, the other option was to put the poles in the street. There would be... that would take the aerial trespass completely out of this, and Mr. Coombs' house would be fed from the new line running up. The impact, the utility company has some leeway as to where they set the poles and how that's affected, and I think Mr. Coombs' idea of documenting and showing where the stuff would be is perfect. That's exactly what should happen. There is options there, and for some reason, some members of the utility company are dragging their feet to do it. I was in contact with another engineer who said it was a fine idea to move the poles. For some reason, now they're saying they don't want to do that. The town of Southampton has an obligation here for health, safety, and a bunch of other reasons to see to it that this is done correctly. There's other options available, and again, for some reason, the utility company doesn't want to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay.
So I... For discussion amongst the committee now?
Yeah.
Do we have clarification as to whether or not, to Dan's point, whether or not Planning Board needs to weigh in because it's a... Well, first of all, can we confirm that it's actually been designated a scenic highway? And if so, if... this is the committee-only, folks, sorry. If so, can we get clarification as to whether or not Planning Board, whether his interpretation of MGL is correct, and we need Planning Board to weigh in before we make a decision? And while we sort that out, I would move that we continue this hearing till November 21st so that we can find out these results, and in the meantime, the entire packet, which was in color, I'm assuming, that was delivered to us, be scanned and posted somewhere on the website, on the town website, so everybody can see the color maps and the directions. And we'll utilize these two weeks to get additional clarification. For the public's point of view, once we close the hearing, it's done. We can't open it back up. So we can continue it for two weeks, and I'd make that motion if there's no disagreement.
That would be our next Select Board meeting.
Is that a time-specific as well as a date?
6:05 PM, first item on the agenda.
6:05 PM on November 21st, which would be our next regularly scheduled Select Board meeting. Can I have a second? Steven, second. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, roll call, vote, please.
Lumra, aye.
Jones, aye.
Lavalley, aye.
Is Joy there? Not seeing her. Okay, foul's aye. Going to say four and one non-vote.
She said we take her computer broke.
Don't see her.
That doesn't help us.
No, it doesn't help her. I can't hear a vote. So four in favor to continue the hearing. Okay, motion passes.
And who seconded that motion?
Steven.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, the hearing is continued and not formally closed, right?
Right, and the three points we're going to resolve is confirm designated a highway. And the three points we're going to resolve is confirm, designate a scenic highway. Confirm whether or not Planning Board needs to weigh in. And if so, Planning Board, if not already regularly scheduled, should hold an emergency meeting so that we have the answers back by 21st. And then scan a PDF of the colored version of the whole packet and get it on the website.
While, if I may, just a quick comment, I know the public hearing is closed.
It's not.
It's not. It's continued.
Postponed.
Postponed.
Oh, I'm sorry. For the residents that live on the street, I know sometimes it's, it's kind of tough to decipher an aerial map like we have here with us this evening. In the trips that I've made to the site, there is white spray paint on the road in the increments where the poles are going to reside. It's how we mark it to make sure that if mistakes get removed or if they're knocked over or leaves blown over and they wind up going down the hill, what have you, those white markings down the roadway are the locations where the poles were proposed and they are located on the side of where those poles were proposed.
So I'm, I'm, okay. I'm assuming that we had not seen the color map either. All we have is this ourselves. So at a minimum, we, we will get, yes, I mean, this came in color. We will get this scanned in, put up on our website. And if there is a request from the residents on Manhan Road to, to meet with EverSource, I think the idea of some sort of more clear plan or more explanation of what all the little parts mean, I think would be probably very, very helpful. Okay?
Whatever they look.
Okay, all right. I think we're done. Thank you. All right?
To be continued.
To be continued, but not tonight. We're done with the comments for tonight, I think. Yeah?
And I think that you have a plan.
They do.
I've just said that.
Something's not on the computer.
Yeah, well.
All right. I think there should be a hard copy of the planning showing where the temporary easement and which, how they should, or which house is going to be affected.
So hopefully they will provide that if they've sat here and heard it all tonight. So I think it would be in their interest to do that. All right, folks, I'm going to ask us to continue on, please. We've got a big agenda tonight. Thank you all for coming. Much appreciate the town participation. It's really, really good for coming out to share your opinions on issues and help make that known.
That's correct.
That was a big surprise to me.
Okay, next. Okay, so we don't have any other presentations. We do have a couple of reports tonight from our town departments. And first up actually is Randall from the Highway Department and Transfer Station. And if you would give us, and first of all, I would just say we have reports, written report, sorry, written reports from the Highway Department, the Water Department and Board of Health and first of all, and we are also being recorded, I'm letting that be known again, that we are being recorded by the Reminder Newspaper in addition to being recorded by our Public Access TV.
Did you turn public time, public time?
Yes.
Okay. That was distracted by trying to get the computer.
There was no public, no public time person. So what I was saying, so with the three presentations tonight, each of you have provided a very lengthy written report, which we much appreciate, full of detail, great information. I'm not going to ask you to read them, please. Try to summarize the, what you think are the highlights that you would like the citizens to know.
So Randall?
I think it's great. So go ahead, Randall.
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. Yeah, the, I mean, the last time I was here talking to you all was November of 2022 and a lot has gone on since then. So I will try to go as quickly as I can, but I, I did pare it down. Honestly, I could have given you 20 pages. So let's just jump right into it.
Would this be something that you might want to put up on your website, on the?
Um, sure, it's possible.
That way people could also look at it, so.
Um, is there anything you, you've got my, most of my written remarks? Is there anything you prefer I skip or?
No, go for it.
Okay. So current priorities and activities, on October 17th, I joined three other Highway Superintendents in Boston to lobby for Chapter 90 spending and it was a good group. The next thing is our year five annual report for Southampton's municipal stormwater separate sewer system. MS4 general permit was submitted September 28th. Annual minimum control measures including catch basin cleaning and inspection, street sweeping, public outreach and education requirements were all completed. The certificate of compliance for our Conservation Commission for the East Street Bridge Replacement Project was recorded with Hampshire County Registered of Deeds on September 15th. And if I can just give a quick shout out, we had two members of the Conservation Commission recently resign and I'd like to thank them for the, for working with me. I served with both of them on the committee, on the commission. Art and Marla will be missed. They, they gave a lot to the commission, a lot of their time. In June, we participated in our first Great American Rain Barrel Company program. I was a little underwhelmed with the, we only sold 17. So I don't know if it's a program we're going to continue. I guess the only investment is my time, but you know, we'll see where we are in the spring and as to whether we're going to do it again or not. I got one and I think it works great.
Maybe stronger promotion or something?
Yeah, I, I tried. Compliance tasks for the Highway Diesel Fuel System are up to date. On March 27th, we responded to a lengthy records request from the Department of Environmental Protection following a March 10th inspection. The DEP did not request any additional information or actions following the submittal of our response. So on the pavement preservation front, we did crack seal on Golden Circle, Pine Wood Drive, Kingsbury Lane, Duggan Lane, Meadow Lane, Parsons Way, Rosalie Lane, Courtney Lane, Hawthorne Drive, David Street, Thomas Circle, Susan Drive, Miller Ave, Edward Ave, Genie Circle, Town Hall and Fire Department parking lots, the Labree Field Entrance Drive, Edwards Library Entrance and Parking Lot, and portions of Glendale Road, Montgomery Road and Brickyard Road. We did micro-surfacing treatment, which is a really thin top coat of pavement on Golden Circle, Pine Wood Drive, Kingsbury Lane, Duggan Lane, Meadow Lane, Parsons Way, Rosalie Lane and Courtney Lane. All of this work was done utilizing Southampton's $225, $841.75 apportionment of the Winter Recovery Assistant Program funds released to cities and towns by the Baker Administration in the spring of '22. Our asphalt hot box has been out for the past month around town and will continue as long as weather cooperates and the asphalt plants remain open. And just as, to give you a kind of demographic, we put down 15 tons on Maple Street alone. So it takes a lot of asphalt to fix roads. While we were unable to perform full grading of any of them this year, we have done work to address washouts, potholes and rough sections of all town-owned gravel roads, including Maple Street where we performed drainage work as well. The majority of the summer was occupied by mowing athletic fields, grounds and the cemetery as well as response to tree cleanup from a couple of strong storms. Failed catch basins were repaired on Fulmer and Russellville Roads and four were repaired on Aaron Lane. Catch basin cleaning is currently underway. Repairs were performed on Brickyard Road Extension under an emergency order from the Conservation Commission. A dozen or so trees that were blocking the channel and forcing the Manhan River against the bank adjacent to the road were removed to reopen the channel and the undermined bank was then stabilized by Highway Department personnel. Highway staff are working on undercoating our fleet of vehicles prior to salt season in order to help preserve the equipment we have. The Park Pavilion bathrooms were drained and winterized today and so they are closed for the winter. Our first snow happened November 1st, so I've got a couple of quick winter reminders.
And I would just, just read the highlights because if people can access the bylaws, okay?
Okay. Move automobiles, trash, recycling containers out of the way when it snows. Do not plow any snow from your driveway into the street. Please clean your fire hydrants 24 hours after a snowstorm. And the last one, sidewalks should be cleared 24 hours after the storm ends as well. Budget, spending, status and concerns. With the exception of our machinery maintenance line, our expenses are on track, but the aforementioned machinery maintenance, we've had a couple of really big ticket repair bills and several more on the immediate horizon. And I, I kind of detailed what some of those were in case anybody wanted to know.
I did a quick total rental of about $83,000.
Yeah.
Probably, thereabouts.
Uh, is it that much?
Yeah. If, if, well.
Oh, including the work that hasn't been done?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Somewhere around that, yeah.
Yeah, so you can see where I'm a little concerned at the rate we're spending it. On the revenue side, highway permit fees collected to date this fiscal, $200 in trench permits to $920 in curb cut permits, $920 in right-of-way permits. We've collected $0 in punitive fees and fines. Grant updates, Safe Routes to School program funds have been approved for signage and design for pedestrian improvements near the William Inures Elementary School. And the construction costs for that are on the FY27 Transportation Improvement Program. So hopefully everything keeps progressing on that front. I applied again this year for another small grant to help non-lethal management of some beavers upon leveling device. I haven't heard back from that grant yet though. Personnel updates, we remain short three truck driver, equipment operators and Highway Department mechanic. We have received 20 applicants in response to the Indeed.com posting, but we are getting virtually no responses when we reach out to them to fill out the Southampton employment application. So I don't know what the disconnect is, whether people are just applying for the sake of applying or they're really interested and they're not getting our message.
I think what you'll find is there's still a group of people that have to at least demonstrate that they're looking in order to continue with their benefits.
Got it.
So they can say, hey, I applied here, here and here.
Okay.
Right, they don't have to answer the question, well, did anybody follow up with you?
Well, that's unfortunate because, you know, I was, I was kind of pleased to get 20 applicants and then to have one get back to me was a bit disappointed. Plans for the next four to six months. Next Tuesday, I will attend the annual joint meeting of the Tri-County Highway Superintendents Association and Mass Highway Association. The agenda looks like there will be some interesting speakers and I hope to bring some useful information back to Southampton and the other towns I represent as Hampshire County Director on Tri-County. We will be preparing for response to winter storms, keeping vehicles operational and working on the FY25 work plan and budget, which is soon, going to be here sooner than we all would want, although you're smiling for a particular reason, I'm sure.
I won't be sending out the notices, but I will not be receiving the notices.
Thanks, Ed. My goals are to retain my talented team and do what I am able to keep them healthy and able to respond to winter emergencies. I would like to fill those four open positions. I would like to get fully staffed in order to catch up with an extensive backlog of work and find professional development opportunities and safety training for highway personnel and myself. I'd like to get back to collaborating with other departments, boards and commissions on projects that we, we've helped out in, in the past, but we just, we don't have the resources right now and it's, I'd like to get back to it. Long-term issues for Select Board consideration. I think we've made progress in bringing wages toward more competitive levels, but I urge the board continued diligence to keep competitive wages a priority as inflation in a tight-jawed market pushes higher compensation packages in order to attract and retain well-qualified department staff who possess the prerequisite professional license required to operate our heavy equipment and plow trucks so that we can fill some of these vacant positions. It's going to help us avoid continuing to struggle to keep up with work and get some training and other worthy town product, projects accomplished, as I mentioned. In equipment, much of the same. We've made progress, but if you recall, a few departments had capital requests approved this year, which only compounds the program vehicle replacement schedule to next year. So you're kicking the can down the road. And then, I had an issue come up today. My department was wondering about Veterans Day. So there was a claim that we have celebrated Saturday holidays on Fridays and Sundays on Mondays. I checked both the PPB manual and the, and the union contract. And while the language is pretty clear in that contract, I also went back to check past precedent and found nine situations where holidays have fallen on weekends and were taken either on the Friday or the Monday.
Sunday to Monday is the normal one. If there's a holiday on a Sunday, usually state and I think federal both.
Right, I, I understand, I understand the guidance. I understand.
Saturday, I'm not sure that that's true. If, if it falls on a Saturday, I don't think either a Friday or a Monday.
The PPB manual follows the state laws. The state law is if a holiday falls on a Saturday, it's deserved on Saturday. If a holiday falls on a Sunday, it's deserved on the Monday.
And both PPB manual and the Highway Union Contract state that. However, we have diverged from that in the past. So.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't say since I've been here, that is the guidance that I have given. Now what certain departments may have, you know, done on their own or not understood.
Sunday holidays, like oftentimes like a Christmas or something might follow on, fall on Sunday and then we take the Monday holiday for sure. That, that one I think has been pretty clear for most people.
Right.
I think the challenge is when there is one on a Friday because you're normally on a work week on a, on a, sorry, on a Saturday because you're on a work week on a Friday and it would never carry over to a Monday. At most, it would be a Friday, I would think.
In general, the, all state officers are going to be open on Friday. The DMV is open on Friday.
I understand all of this.
Right, okay.
I told, I told staff that they were very upset about it and I wanted, I told them I would bring it to the Select Board for consideration. And I know we've, while we had the guidance that we, we follow state, I know at least on a couple of these on my time sheet, I'd put by Select Board votes, the Select Board voted to celebrate Saturday holidays on a Friday.
If we did, it would have been around, say Thanksgiving or Christmas probably.
Yes.
I mean, not, not.
It would have been a one-off.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been a regular occurrence, I don't think.
And the other thing, looking at your notes, is that it very well may have been because they may have voted to give a half day on the Friday before Christmas or Thanksgiving or New Year's that someone extended that to a full day.
I, I just, I told my staff I would bring it to the Select Board.
Are these veterans?
What's that?
Aren't these employees veterans?
No. Well, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Are the employees veterans? No.
I mean, I don't know if that's germane to the conversation.
I think at this point in time, irrespective of.
There's a separate law on that.
Yeah.
Oh, is there?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
But I think at the moment, we know that we should be following the state, state law. And that's, I think we will have to maintain.
So, okay, I'll.
Well, I guess, you know, right now the rules in town are that we follow the state holiday. So we should do that. If there's a movement afoot amongst employees that we should consider changing that, then that should be put forward to PPB to start the process. I can't speak to the collective bargaining agreement because that would be separate. Right? So, and it doesn't sound like there's an appetite to take that one-off vote for this week. That's what I hear.
So let me jump back into my prepared remarks because that one just came up today. I'm just curious, we've, we've spoken in the past and I know we've got a meeting coming up about cost efficiencies. I think I've asked before where the board sees the Highway Department going in the future. I just, I worry when I see public, our public safety departments contracting, getting smaller, it seems like, or providing less services. It's, it concerns me. I don't want to just outsource or whatever. So that's just my editorial comment. And then lastly, a quick half-page on the transfer station.
Well, just before you hit that, Randall, I, I think it's safe to say, at least at the Cost Efficiency Committee, the intent is that meeting is going to figure out the pros and cons on why we should not follow the 2016 recommendation, recommendation of Department of Revenue and consolidate all those groups into one and create a Department of Public Works. So if you haven't read the report, i.e. Water Department, Cemetery, Parks Commission, you should read the report.
Yeah, it's been handed out.
Yeah. And it's a public meeting. That's the sole purpose of that meeting.
Yeah, we've got a meeting set up for the 15th so we can talk about it a little more.
All right, very good.
And it'll be probably the initial meeting. I'm, I'm thinking, there's many other meetings that night, so we're probably going to keep it to the 45-minute limit or something because just to get the, the ground broken and talk about.
We expect you to spearhead that.
Some of those, some of those points. But yeah, we did want to pick that up and just talk about it because it's come up and never really been dealt with.
Yeah, and that's.
So we need to kind of just, you know, really just dig through it and see what we think.
I'm more than happy to be involved in that conversation.
We will plan on that for the 15th at 6 o'clock.
All right, my final, final push, transfer station. I continue to push out information, informational posts on Facebook and in newspaper articles on Facebook and in newspaper articles to educate residents and provide guidance on waste and recycling streams. With positive response to a subsidized backyard composter pilot program 22, I put in a larger order, which we offer to transfer station permit holders, and will do so again in spring of 2024. Keep an eye on the Southampton Facebook page for details. Composting yard waste and food scraps are one way to keep rubbish disposal costs down by keeping them out of landfills. We were awarded $5,950 in recycling dividends funds from the Mass DEP Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. These funds subsidize the transfer station enterprise budget.
Except for FY23, right?
It is for FY, it's '24.
'24.
Yes, I applied for the grant, and it will be coming in this fiscal at some point. And that's...some financials. We've sold 750 transfer station permits, which is down from previous years, for total permit revenue of $46,275. Pay-as-you-throw bag revenue of $31,759, tipping revenues of $7,430, and recycling revenue of $807.45. I do want to mention that I've seen a little, a concerning trend of we're selling less and less transfer station permits every year, and prices continue to go up. And so though we keep raising fees, it almost seems counterproductive because as we raise fees, I feel like more people are opting for private hauler service. So I think we need to take a really close look at at what point...and I believe we were $33,000 in the whole last fiscal, or in FY22, and it looks like we had a revenue shortfall of $56,000 in FY23, if the revenue and expense reports were correct.
How could you have shortfall because you had to have a surplus of excesses and deficiencies in order to buy those new dumpsters?
That was a...we approved that many years ago. We did have a very...
But you had to have...
We had a huge surplus, and it dwindled really quickly as prices skyrocketed for disposal. Disposal costs have really gone up. I mean, we're not only...
I remember now, the audits were delayed, which caused the certification to be delayed.
I think that's probably true.
And I know, maybe people know that we have a rate for rubbish disposal, and we used to actually get revenue for recycling. With a highly fluctuating commodity cost for recyclables, our contract with the materials recycling facility, we may pay in if the price drops too much, and it very rarely gets up to a point where we get a revenue stream out of it. So it's a very volatile market, and I think we're going to have to take a close look at when we've reached that tipping point where it doesn't make sense to run it anymore. It's worth more discussion, but I just wanted to give you a status because that's what I'm here for.
Good. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yeah.
So you answered that one. What about the bags at the transfer station with the price increase? Have you seen any drastic adjustment in bags being purchased or no?
Not really, no.
That is a correlation. Okay.
Nope.
Street sweeper. Where are we with the stormwater fees offset to generate the revenue to support replacing that street sweeper?
We have a proposal. Did we sign the proposal?
We're waiting for the proposal.
We're waiting for a proposal for tie-in bond for the utility study.
Mm-hmm. Let me ask a different question. Based on your timeline that you know, when do you anticipate going to the voters to ask for approval? Because it would be the next fiscal year that this would actually get implemented. Do you see it happening now for '25, '26, '27?
Approval for the utility or this, a new sweeper?
Well, my understanding is the new sweeper is solely needed for the, what is it, the stormwater?
Yes.
Right? So if we create the stormwater tax or fee, right, that money will generate, much like transfer station, will support that, and everything that goes along with it. So in order to do that, you got to get the voters to approve it and then put it on the next year's taxes. So when do we think we're going to go before the voters?
I don't even have a proposal yet. So it is way over my head.
Three years, five years, six years? Because I guess that would then drive my decision as to whether or not do we figure out a way to give you $320,000 to buy a new street sweeper.
We're trying to keep the current one going in absence of getting funded for when I had to do what I got to do and get it back on the road when I can.
Okay. Next question for you is I see later on in our agenda, you're looking to give away responsibility for the cemeteries and mowing the grass for a manpower...
Do you want to go through that now or later?
I just want to, if you're going to stay, we can address this later, but under the manpower, I'm wondering what your thoughts are about adding another level of employees to your group, you know, like the summer work programs where you pay 16 bucks an hour and you get kids, 18 to 22, to come in, right, for six months, not benefited. We'd have to go through PBB to get this approved, right? And hopes are that you get enough people to come through, maybe you'll find somebody and train them up and they'll stay with you. But if not, they can do the bottom. They can paint the hydrants. They can cut the grass. They can weed whack.
So my immediate thought on that is it's a great idea, but right now, we're struggling to keep up with four people. I would definitely have to take someone to monitor them, presumably at least one person.
Right. But I'm mindful of your comments earlier that you're concerned about contracting everything out and seeing your public works straight. So this is step one. You're contracting...
And I'll tell you, I'll tell you why I'm so concerned about that. So I've got a group of guys who takes ownership of the job right now. We've used contractors for certain things in the past where corners were cut, and we ended up not using contractors for that service anymore because I found I spent more time babysitting them than I got work out of them. It was a waste of the taxpayers' money. So I would much rather have a group of guys who have ownership of the job, and that's just, but that's the department that I signed up to lead, and that's the department that I want to lead.
I think you have better results when you directly supervise the guys or the girls. That may work for you.
I completely agree.
Okay.
Okay. Dan, question?
Something I've never heard of before, maybe some people listening have heard of. What is the pay-as-you-throw bag program?
You don't use a transfer station, do you?
Yeah, you don't use a transfer station.
Would you please tell me what the pay-as-you-throw program is?
Pay-as-you-throw is a program...
Maybe you'll encourage me to use the transfer station.
That DEP evangelizes. Basically, it's a cost per bag. You have to pay for a bag of trash, and the thought behind it is if you're going to have to pay for a bag to dispose of your trash, you're going to be more judicious at separating out the waste streams and recycling. I mean, we have mandatory recycling in Southampton anyway, so everybody should be separating out those waste streams. But the pay-as-you-throw is intentionally supposed to lead you to that. The more you recycle, the less it costs you to dispose of your rubbish.
Is that separate than having the stickers and all that?
The sticker is a permit to use the transfer station.
Ah, I see. Okay.
It's a yearly...
Yeah. Some communities, instead of bags, you buy stickers, and you throw the sticker in each bag.
You can do it either way.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And right now, the bags are $2, right?
$2.40.
$25 for 40.
$25 for 10 or something?
Yeah, they went up this year.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
No questions. Randall, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Well, doing a great job.
I'll add, thank you for maple and fomer rote. I frequent those roads a lot, and I can see that it takes weekly attention, and it got a lot this summer. Thank you.
Sporadically, but yes, thank you. Welcome.
Okay. Thanks, Randall. Much appreciated. Next up are, let's see on the agenda, I believe we have our water superintendent.
We did.
All righty. Water commissioners, water superintendent, who would like to give a try? All right. We'll just put you right in the middle of the fire here. Go ahead and introduce yourselves to everybody.
Hello, Brett Simmons, new superintendent of the Water Department, going on week four. Still have a smile. Just going to follow the format that was provided. Fortunately, it's not as full as Randall's, but I'm still learning.
No, again, just, you know, feel, you know, whatever the highlight is that you'd like to do, that's fine.
Historically, I'm getting settled in with the department without any overlap with the former superintendent. You know, it's been a bit challenging, but every week's getting better. I just want to shout out to Robin. Big thanks to Robin Richard for getting me all the answers and helping me through all the transitional period. First couple of weeks, I've been working on Massachusetts DEP paperwork, putting myself on record as the certified operator for our public water system. Includes staffing, comprehensive staffing plans and operation plans for our public water system. Been granted administrator access for the town of Southampton's website, or I'm sorry, for the DEP website, the EDP portal, where all the documents, lab reports, and submittals will be submitted to the state. Projects that we're working on, college highway, a lot of it was done before I got here. All the construction activities for the current phase should be completed by November 10th, which is a day or two from now, including the restoration of the impacted yards. Last Friday, they did the repaving of the travel lane. Should be noted that this is a temporary paving for the winter, and the full lane from curb to center line will be milled and resurfaced as a requirement of the Mass DEP permit in the spring of 2024. So it's almost done, but not completely. Second round for 2023, the lead and copper sampling is undergoing. We dropped off bottles yesterday to residences. We're picking them up today. It's a required Mass DEP and a lead and copper rule. Requires 40 samples for the town water, and includes norris and peanuts. And it's going to be a kind of a long learning process and a lot of individual paperwork to follow this process.
Right. Just a question. How do you go about, these residences just selected randomly?
They're predetermined. They are on a selected list based on tiers, tier classifications through the DEP based on age of the house and plumbing inside. The idea is to check to see if our water is in the right pH levels to not strip off any of these lead or lead In the middle of that, also, we're in the second or fourth quarter, and so we got to get in lead and cross connection. It's a backflow preventative devices that protect our water from backflow situations. Historically, the Water Department has subcontracted this out to licensed testing contractors. And our, historically, our guy has been Sigma Mechanical, and he has since retired since the last one. So I'm in the process of acquiring, getting additional bids. I have one bid. I'm waiting for one other one. And it should be noted that anybody has a sprinkler irrigation system in accordance with the state and public local codes that these devices actually should be tested annually. Meter-reading upgrades. The Tax Collector's Office will be upgrading to a new software with an anticipated date going live on July 1st. This is an unexpected expense that's going to cost the Water Department. This will force us to upgrade. Our antiquated meter-reading equipment, our existing equipment, will not be compatible with the new software. And it should be noted that the existing handheld meters equipment is no longer supported by the manufacturer. So it was an up-and-coming financial burden that was going to happen, but I think it's going to have to happen before July. And anticipated costs are going to be upwards of $25,000 with an annual subscription fee. And then we're exploring the options of breaking it up into two different costs in fiscal 2024 and 2025 with the initial investment, which includes training, and equipment would be around $15,000.
So again, part of this will be the actual meter readers themselves, the handheld devices?
Yeah, the equipment that we go around and actually enters into the billing software, yes. It's ongoing. Still gathering information on it.
Just another clarifying question. Your memo says the new system will go live July 1 in '23. I know that's '24.
'24, yes.
At what point will you have to pay for the new meter readers?
They got to be in before July 1 because they have to be set up for that quarter billing.
So it's going to be an additional current year cost?
Yes.
Related only to the tech upgrade?
Yes. We're looking at roughly about $15,000, and that would be on the basis of trying to spread it out over two fiscal years because it wasn't planned for. And that would be getting the remaining second belt clip in the fiscal 2025 year. Nothing to report on spending. To be honest with you, I've just been trying to catch up and make sure all the paperwork has been properly submitted to the state. Have not got into the budgets yet. Grants that we were just recently awarded was an assets management grant. The money will be used to expand our mapping and our GIS mapping that we currently use in our tabbies and tablets. It is an effective software program that we use in the field. And we're going to be working with CEI, our consultants, and it's going to be a total of a grand total of about $80,000 with some in-kind service money to be matched.
Another question about your ESRI license for the GIS software. What other departments in town access your database or participate in building a shared database?
None that I know of.
I mean, I'm thinking planning, though we have no staff. Conservation, we have part-time staff. Public safety, for that matter. Water supply, firefighting. I would think that this would be a licensed, moderately expensive, super powerful, that would benefit all departments, but certainly more than one. Thank you.
And personnel and staffing, we're still awaiting the Collins Commission report for that Water Operations Field Supervisor. And I guess at this time, I just, one question is, is there any new news since the last board meeting? Or is it still anticipated for December?
Yeah, it's still in, as far as I know.
If not, later?
Yeah. And I think people are, Ed will talk to it in a minute, but people are being interviewed by the Collins Center. The various staff are being interviewed, so that process should be ongoing right now.
We have one open position, the water technician job. We've had one application. I believe it's the first one, and maybe the five or six months has been posted. Need to follow up, and I need to follow up with him. And then, any long-term issues and planning? I'm not there yet, but I do have a couple of, I guess, questions for the board. And it's regarding EverSource, our electricity supplier. Has there ever been any attempts to negotiate a town rate from EverSource? And, you know, it costs us $40,000 a year for electricity to pump the water out of the ground just at the well location alone. And if that hasn't happened, then has the town ever considered switching, potentially switching to Westfield Gas and Electric or Hoyok Gas and Electric where the electrical rates are significantly cheaper?
Can we have Ed address that?
Yeah. Actually, we do go out periodically for bids on the, not the supply side, but the electrical side rate and go that way. And in addition to that, we also receive a reduction through our net metering credits and our cow power credits.
Has there ever been any thoughts of going to Hoyok Gas and Electric?
In addition to that, all the bid. Right. But we are halfway through the two-vote process to form our own municipal light power company, right? And we're doing it specifically for cable. But that will also then allow us to sell our franchise rights or lease our franchise rights to another municipality. So Hoyok Gas and Electric could expand. They're already in, for example, they're already here with the gas lines. But if we formed our own MLP, we could then separate from EverSource, and we could seek bids to give a 50-year lease to Hoyok or to Westfield and see who comes up with the best pricing. But we need two town votes to do that.
Just to clarify...
I think we have another vote.
We've done two.
So we're already there.
We've done the two votes, yeah.
We're working on streetlights.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And I guess going along with that, I actually added one thing today I wanted to just touch base on. Have we ever considered, and I'm not sure whether or not it's able to, with the land use restrictions, put up any solar panels or solar arrays on any of our recently acquired properties?
We have talked about it over time on some town-owned property, in particular to... We have talked about it over time on some town-owned property, in particular to put up some solar. We had been, somebody from EverSource actually had reached out to us at one point in time and were very encouraging about setting up a meeting and then it kind of fell, fell by the wayside. So that's something we probably need to pick back up again because they were supposed to be coming around with some sort of a municipal program and it never really has come to our attention again, so.
And they ended up backing off that program.
I think, yeah.
That's why they wanted to get on the agenda.
For whatever reason. But we have definitely talked about, you know, with some various vacant town-owned properties here, that that might be a possibility. So it's, it's an idea for sure that needs some follow-through. And if it's not with EverSource, I'm not sure with who, but yeah.
Because we're currently, Water Department's currently managing Cook Road, which might be a viable spot. Again, I haven't looked into land use restrictions or anything like that.
Right.
Well, actually, Cook Road has a conservation restriction on it, so it would not be eligible.
All right.
As most of the large properties that you and I would see and look at and think of them.
My other one is going to be 235, Pomeroy Meadow, which is 76 acres, but I would imagine it falls under the same.
Yep.
I just wanted to mention that the ad hoc technology committee is willing, as Ed has mentioned, that they're willing to take on that work of sourcing and working with potentially finding grants for solar, renewable power sources, so something that volunteers within the town are willing to help with. So perhaps there's some synergy there.
Good.
So I just have a couple of things. So I, I'm not going to hold you to an answer because I know you're four weeks in and you said you're getting with speed on the budget.
Oh, the answer then.
But I didn't, I personally haven't heard any pushback about the 9% increase that came out September 1st. So that's, I guess, a positive sign that you can get more money that way. But also, as far as I know from the last fiscal budget or audits that we have, the Water Department's sitting on $300,000 of reserves for one-time expenses such as these meter readers that you're looking for. So I think you have pools of money that you could potentially use and then recoup and then just put another 9% increase in there on the rates.
When you haven't touched on the budgeting yet, it's been paperwork and required letting copper sample and stuff, and I just haven't got there yet, but.
Right, yeah, good. And I think already you had responded to me earlier about, we had awarded some ARPA money for the, the water main for the first phase of it, which you've been doing from from Foma Road up to Clark Street. And so I'm understanding the ARPA money has been used for that purpose and is combined in with the transfer, I'm sorry, with the Water Enterprise Fund money to pay off that first leg of that construction.
Yeah, and I provide, I sent you a copy of that today in an email and that follow-up, I don't know if you get a chance, but that balances down to zero for the ARPA money.
Okay, all right.
So I have a very unimportant question, but I think our town people are very proud of something that we, in the past, we've won the National Great Water Taste Test Award back in 2008. When are we going to win it again?
I don't.
You saw the best four weeks.
Yeah. Well, actually, one thing I didn't touch on, and I don't even remember if I brought it in there, to be honest with you. The other paperwork I'm working on is submitting required past lab sampling data for PFOS. Southham Water Department has entered into class action lawsuit. And it's not, I don't know if it's a matter of when or if, but when, if we are impacted. You know, they have significant issues on, on the Westfield side, East Mountain Road, and we're in the same aquifer. So I'm not sure how that, how long that process has been ongoing, but I get maybe 10 emails a week, letters constantly, you know, providing information. And that's one thing I did, I believe I, I'm caught up to date with tracking down past PFOS data and submitting to the lawyers and getting all the paperwork up to date, so.
Yeah, one more quick thing, and I'm sure Mr. Johnson will want to follow you at some point about his interest in getting the Baypac Group reformed, as we spoke about before. So Barnes Aquater Protection Committee, so just working through the PB PC. Future thoughts? All right.
And current thoughts as we look at the adequacy and effectiveness of our groundwater protection bylaw.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brett.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you. Glad you're still, still with us after a month and still standing, huh?
We got a spot for that trophy when we.
Yeah, right. You got a cot in there, huh? All right. Very good, next, Board of Health. Kate.
Tough reports to follow up after, but I'm going to try to keep it a little bit brief because I have a babysitter for about another 20 minutes. First, I just want to say thank you to the board members, Leah Kerskiel, Kate Savaris. They've been really helpful, their knowledge and expertise as healthcare providers and parents and town residents, really helpful in our meetings. And, you know, Leah, as a parent within Norris School Community, has really been, been helpful and helped, like helping us to think more about the school community during our meetings. I also just want to thank our special agent, Charlie Kneckie, who's been providing us contracted inspection services. And Jerry, just because, you know, she's been working in the Health Department, handling a lot of the clerical duties and administrative responsibilities in the absence of a full-time health inspector, so grateful for their services. Just wanted to talk about our three main priorities for the upcoming year is to have our department fully funded, to ensure that there's no gaps in providing essential services to town residents. Our goal is to also improve communication and collaboration with other boards and constituents in town, which I'll talk a little bit about more. And we also aim to strengthen regional partnerships amongst boards and municipalities to address key issues and bolster collaborative efforts. If we've learned anything from this pandemic, we really need to work together in order to be able to meet the needs of the town. We're hoping that we're going to be able to bolster some additional services through the Shared Public Health Excellence Program, which is still in development and we're still trying to figure out how we can best leverage regional services because we're all in the same boat. All of our little small towns are all struggling with the same things. And so one thing that the Shared Public Health Excellence Program hopes to do is develop a regional board or a communication board so that that way each individual community will have a little bit more of a voice. It's kind of a steering committee, and so we're hoping to see that steering committee come to light. We've been kind of pushing for that, but we, of course, will be a participant in that and to really, you know, make sure we have a voice because as we've been talking about, you know, we're lacking inspection services. We really want to have better access to immunization clinics and health fairs and like services that will benefit our town directly. And so we're hoping with the steering committee, we'll be able to advocate for those resources. And we're one of 14 communities that are all kind of saying the same thing, so we're looking forward to those meetings. One of our biggest struggles right now is the lack of a health agent. I know we've talked about this, I've been, had a couple of meetings talking about this. Really feel like we have exhausted all possible efforts in order to identify an inspector that we could hire. So just to familiarize everybody, we're paying about $60 an hour for contracted inspection service rates, which is a big increase to the $25 or $30 an hour that we would be paying for a hired employee. So it's obviously coming at a higher cost to our taxpayers. Also, we've been very grateful for ARPA funding that has helped to cover some of these unanticipated inspections fees. We know that ARPA funds don't last forever, and so we're hopeful to not only come up with a more permanent solution to address our budget needs and to make sure that we have inspection services, but also like allow for us to have a little bit more time to work on other projects and initiatives. You know, we've spent a huge amount of our time trying to find health inspectors, to make sure we have inspection services, to adjust our fee schedule so that that way we're covering the cost of inspection services through collecting fees. And our hope is that either there will be inspection services that become available through the Shared Public Health Excellence Program, which has been hopefully on the horizon for about two years now. So we are hoping that will come to light in the next year or two. I guess I'll believe it when I see it, but I'll just remain hopeful. But until then, you know, we're grateful to have Charlie's inspection services and his knowledge because he brings a lot of value to the town despite the fact that it costs us a little bit more money. Also bring up that we bring an average of $40,000 to $42,000 in inspection fees annually. We adjusted these fees last year to make sure that the cost of inspections were comparable to the amount of, like, the amount of money that we're spending to do the inspections. We are trying to make sure that we're recouping that amount, especially in light of the fact that we're using contracted services. In addition, we've also collected $3,000 or $4,000 in tobacco enforcement fines, and all of these funds go directly to the town. So the state comes in and surveys local businesses to make sure that they're complying to state laws with tobacco enforcement. And when local businesses violate those rules, we actually get to keep that money, which is really nice. So just talking about the budget a little bit more, without ARPA funds over the past 18 months, we would have failed to uphold our obligation to provide essential services to the town of Southampton. We, in our most recent award letter from Ed, it said that we could always re-approach the select board to request additional funding. We have kind of proposed a couple of different options for how we can cover inspection services for the remaining of the fiscal year. Our current, ARPA funding will cover an additional $7,295 as of the end of October, which we anticipate will cover inspection services only for October and November and possibly a portion of services for December. So that leaves December through June that we're kind of trying to figure out. We met last week, and I understand there's been some additional input from Ed about how we can ensure seamless inspection services for the remainder of the fiscal year. And the board met to come up with two solutions. One was to request free cash in the amount of $24,000 in funds that would cover the remaining fiscal year's inspection services. We have a draft warrant that has been submitted to the select board. The alternative to that would be to put in an additional ARPA request to cover those fees, cover the amount needed to cover inspection services. We had previously talked about, we have $6,900 that we have left in the health agent line. And I know we've, I've been in this spot before and we've talked about the importance of leaving that money in place in case there's some miraculous event that we're able to hire an inspector. I understand that Ed had a conversation with Jerry about the possibility about, of transferring that funding from the health agent line into the contracted service line. I'm open to discussing any options as long as it allows for us to come up with a solution that's going to allow for us to continue inspection services through the end of the year. So whether it's ARPA funding, free cash, or, you know, in combination with transferring the funds, you know, we're just acknowledging that our inspection service fees will run out around December 5th if we don't have additional funding to cover those services. And we're really hopeful that either the warrant or the ARPA funding will address our needs through the remaining, remainder of the fiscal year.
Just to note, your budget looks like it's $61.95, so say $61.96 for the health agent wages this year.
Which is about two months, you know, just saying, depending on the month, so the way that we came up with the $24,000 is, would be an average of the inspection services for the appropriate month, so from December until June. Knowing, you know, that would allow for us to, you know, potentially cover some unanticipated inspections that may be needed. Or, you know, there's a lot of inspections in the spring because there's a lot of houses that are sold. While we, oh, and the other thing is we've explored the option of the revolving fund so that that way we could recoup, I mean, we've explored everything. But the select board asked if we could consider the use of a revolving fund so that that way the inspection services that we are collecting would go directly to cover the cost of the inspection services. And the feedback that we received was that there was a limit in the amount of money that can go into the revolving fund. While we've considered it, we're just not really quite sure how to implement it in a way that would actually like be sustainable. And it wouldn't be able to happen at the special town meeting. If it was to happen, it would have to happen at the annual town meeting. So it's not something that we can address right now, but it's certainly something that we're also willing to talk about in the future. But I would imagine that a $15,000, if there is truly a $15,000 limit on the revolving fund, that it may not be sufficient, like $15,000 is like a third of what we collect over the course of the year, so. So the Shared Public Health Excellence Program has provided, and it's kind of in the background, but has provided epidemiologic reports to Southampton. The goal is that these reports will be provided every six months in the future. The goal of this is to track regional transmission of infectious diseases and to promptly identify trends or increased risk to the community. So we're interested to see what that information, that would include information about flu, tick-borne illnesses, STIs, sexually transmitted infections. And the idea behind this is to allow for communities to respond in real time, but also plan for the future and plan for public health messaging around, you know, what, the information that's collected through this disease surveillance. The Shared Public Health Excellence Program is aiming to hire one, maybe two, health agents that will supplement the needs of 14 participating communities. Their primary roadblock is the same that we're experiencing, is that they don't have any qualified candidates. So the state is actually looking to create training hubs to kind of feed inspection services. So like, we see a light at the end of the tunnel, it's still prohibitively far away, but we just keep, you know, hoping that it gets closer because we really, that's a big gap in our region that needs to be filled. Vaccines and just like local vaccine availability. So the public health emergency has ended. COVID vaccines are no longer funded through the state. The Northampton Health Department, which through the Shared Public Health Excellence Program, is still continuing to purchase COVID vaccines, but they're not able to do local vaccine clinics in Southampton. They said that that might change in the future. They did offer a flu vaccine clinic at Norris School and said that, you know, we can continue to have discussions based upon demand if they would want to offer a COVID vaccine clinic here. Just will acknowledge if anyone's having trouble finding flu, COVID, or RSV vaccines, please just reach out to us. We're happy to help connect you with a local appointment. The Sharps program, so we continue to provide free Sharps containers and Sharps disposal to residents. It's a highly utilized program. It helps to decrease likelihood of Sharps being disposed of inappropriately in household trash and decreases risk to sanitary workers. Sharps containers are available at Town Hall and can be disposed of free of charge here as well. Just noting that the state sanitary code has been revised and went into effect May 12th. The health director and health agent have both received training about the changes. And I did include a document that briefly outlines those changes in the report that I gave you. But some examples of changes include making sure that units are pest-free before renting to new tenants, ensuring that units have adequate ventilation, and making sure that rental units have moisture levels that don't promote the growth of mold. And so part of what Charlie would be doing is going into multi-unit apartments to make sure that these new codes for human habitation are being followed. We do anticipate that because some of these buildings are older and may not have been inspected in several years, that there may be some complaints that arise from that, which, you know, may result in some inspections that we are not able to recoup inspection fees for. Mosquito surveillance, I'll talk about this really quickly. There's actually been a substantial increase in West Nile positive mosquito samples and eastern equine encephalitis. And in fact, six human cases of West Nile virus were identified in Massachusetts. Part of that is because the mosquito season is longer and there's just more mosquitoes. A couple of communities within Hampshire County were identified as moderate risk for West Nile, so we made sure that we communicated information on social media and on the town website about mosquito exposure reduction, risk reduction. Last, I'll talk about the marijuana surcharge and opiate settlement funds. So we've explored a lot of different ideas with the school communities and with Hampshire Hope and with other Northampton resources about how to appropriate both the marijuana surcharge funds as well as the opioid settlement funds. And I feel like this is just something that needs to, there just needs to be more time dedicated to this. I saw that there was a line item later on the, on the agenda. I just feel like it would be really great to partner with both the school committee and with the select board about how to best utilize those funds. We have very recently been in touch with Hampshire Hope, who has additional ideas about how to appropriate the opioid settlement funds. And so I'm happy to share that information at a later time, but just know that this is something, we really explored the idea in collaboration with the regional nurse leader to be able to apply for additional DFC, which is the Drug-Free Community Funds. And we communicated with SPIFI, who supports health outcomes for youth in Hampshire County. It's like a whole collaborative about how to collect data that would support for us to be able to apply for additional grant funding, for instance, for a counselor, for health education, or to bring in additional resources to expand outreach within our school district. And unfortunately, because of some structural changes within nursing, within the school community and the negotiations for contracts within the Hampshire Regional School District, it was just really hard to find people that wanted to take responsibility for. it was just really hard to find people that wanted to take responsibility for taking on additional work. We really feel like it's important work, and we're happy to continue the discussion, it's just not something that we can do in a silo, and so if anyone would like to meet with us or, you know, have a conversation about how to really put some initiatives into action, we're happy to do that. So the last question on the, that the report asked for was the magic wand question, which is, if we could wave a magic wand, what would we ask for? And the two things that we would really love to do is to have adequate funding to support our department, and to kind of come up with a more sustainable plan over the next year that's really gonna help support the operations of our department going forward. Board of Health is an essential department, and inspection services are essential services. And it's just, it's, it is challenging for us to really think more long-term and plan without really, uh, the budget to support the department. So I'm hoping that, A, by partnering through, with the Shared Public Health Excellence Program, that that will address some of those shortcomings, but not all of them, and so we're hopeful for that. And then the second magic wand wish would be that we really would love to have a little bit better, like, maybe a method of communication between the Board of Health and the Select Board, and I know that we have a liaison, like, if there's any way that we can share information so that that way we have that, that really strong back and forth. I mean, communication goes both ways, and I will say, you know, having Francine in our meetings, Francine was always bringing information from the Select Board to our meetings, and that was really valuable, but it also goes both ways, right? It allows for us to, you know, kind of get real-time feedback from you about things that we're talking about in our meetings and priorities for you, and so it just helps us to think together. And so, just if there's any ways or any strategies that you have that we can maintain that strong communication, we were, we would love to work on that.
Good. Questions? Anybody?
Thank you. As your liaison, your absentee liaison, I hear the encouragement, and I think your assessment of the criticality of the budget and the structural deficit that you're facing relying on ARPA funds and a retired inspector who is available for now, this is really critical, and so finding a cost-effective way to replace those inspection services on long-term and budget stability around that, absolutely critical. I'll see you at the next meeting.
Awesome, I really appreciate that.
So, question, I think, budget, I may be wrong in this, it may come back to salary for these employees? Are those salaries included in that, our favorite thing to say, the salary study that we have coming?
I really hope so, I mean, of course, I think about long-term sustainability of being able to maintain the Health Director position, I mean, Jerry isn't gonna be around forever, and, you know, I, I do see the competitive wages in town being a potential struggle for the Board of Health to be able to maintain staffing, and so I do hope that, you know, that we're looked at just like every other board is being looked at.
I think both the job descriptions would have gone, right?
Yes, I mean, I think there was, we did a survey, we, you know, we filled out some information. I will just tell you that every town has short inspectors right now.
Yes, it seems like that is a, you mentioned there's a training hub that's being developed.
Yep, actually, the East Hampton Health Department lost one of their workers, Bree, because Bree also switched over to go work for this training hub, and part of that is providing, teaching people about the new housing regulations, but there's hope to develop more inspectors. I mean, they basically have to have a degree, they want you to go to a four-year school to make $25 an hour to do inspection services, it's just not.
I was asking about that, in our package, we have things that, those that can apply for training.
Yes.
To become a sanitary inspector.
I included that as a joke.
Yeah, but look at number four, Board of Health member.
Yeah, okay.
There you go, one-year experience Board of Health member, right?
I have.
But I mean, a professional engineer, professional home inspector, septic system installer, it's like, my God.
So these people are making hundreds of dollars an hour, and we actually communicated, I put it out on social media, I said, are there any septic inspectors that might want a side job? And because it's a conflict of interest, you can't inspect your competitor's work. We actually went to the State Ethics Board about this. You can't inspect your own services, and you can't inspect your competitor's services because you're obviously going to, you're going to find, you know, it's just not, it's not ethical.
On the, the whole funding thing, so I get, you know, everything is to get us to the end of the fiscal year, but what are we doing on July 1st? What's the plan?
Well, I mean, we put in, we did put in money in the wage line to cover inspection services in our budget. I think it's just something we need to talk about because our proposed budget just wasn't, it wasn't approved. So, what I want to learn is what we can do to either help people support what we believe that our needs are, or, like, I don't know, meet in the middle, come up with a sustainable solution so that that way we're not coming to you three times for ARPA funds.
And then, well, there is no more.
Exactly.
But then the, the other, the flip side of it is, what's the other, what's the other side of the, of the argument? What happens if it's not funded? For example, if we don't meet our net school spending, right, the state will just intercept our cherry, cherry sheet money and turn it over. So what, what will the state do if we lack to either fill the position or fund it?
I am actually, okay, alls I know is that we couldn't put in septic system, like, septic systems wouldn't be able to go in, you know, that we, building and sale of homes wouldn't really be able to fully take place because you need to have septic inspections in order to sell a house. I think it would have a most direct impact on real estate and homeowners who are trying to buy a house, and also, like, restaurant inspections, I mean, I feel like we could, we could come up with a solution for restaurant inspections, but that's, that's actually a really small portion of the inspections that we're doing, it's like, you know, it's actually the easiest part of a inspection services, is the local businesses, because there's only a handful of them.
Yeah, okay. Two, two quick questions.
Sure.
You mentioned the, the, I guess it was a vaccine clinic up at Norris recently, how, how attended was that?
Uh, not super well-attended, and I'll, I'll tell you, the same thing kind of happened at, at my work, and I think it's because a lot of people want to get their COVID vaccine and their flu vaccine together, and the Northampton Board of Health was not able to offer both vaccines at the same clinic. They don't do it because of risks, we talked to them about it, they just didn't want to, because of the risk for medication errors. And it's also truly expensive for the Northampton Health Department to be purchasing bulk vaccines, so it's like, they're, they're paying for that out of their own budget and hoping to recoup the cost through insurance, so they're really hesitant to take on that financial risk when they don't, they don't have the money in their budget either.
Right, okay. And then the second thing, I know there's a program out now where people can write in and get more free COVID tests per household or whatever, but the COVID tests that we had purchased that we had handed out here, I'm assuming that now, even though their timeline has been extended about three times, they must be dead by now, are they not?
Yeah, so, we actually looked into, the state did make some additional COVID tests available to certain, certain municipalities and certain organizations, and unfortunately, we weren't eligible, it was like you had to be serving certain demographics or certain, like, you know, I don't even, we looked into getting more COVID tests for free, and we just couldn't do it. But yes, I believe that the last round of COVID tests reached their end shelf life.
Should be probably not considered too reliable at this point in time.
Yeah, so there, but you are able to order four more free COVID tests through covidtest.gov and have them shipped to your house. And it's funny, they're shipping expired tests, so I think that they were trying to get rid of some cash.
Hopefully they have a good expiration date, that was gonna be my other comment.
Hopefully COVID will just go away.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you, Kate.
Awesome, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Wow, guys, well, we've learned a lot tonight. Lesson one, maybe we don't put all three of these committees on the same night. Note to self.
You're two minutes late.
Big swallow.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I know we've got people waiting in the audience for two particular topics here, let's see if we can kind of move things along. Let's do the Ed's report and our brief reports, and then we'll think about how we can swap a little bit up on the schedule here a little bit. So Ed, why don't you go with your Town Administrator report?
Sure. The Collins Center is continuing to schedule the follow-up interviews for the town employees this week, and Judy Zedonis, my assistant, is sending out the invitations and the date and time, time slots. The quotes for the flat roof replacement for the 1971 addition at the Old Town Hall Police Station have come back, and the low quote was provided by La Rochelle Construction in the amount of $19,000. They have started the work in order to beat the cold weather. It was found when the old two layers were removed that there was additional decking rot than was anticipated and was included in the base bid, and that additional decking has been replaced. The air quality testing at the fire headquarters and FEMA trailer at 204 College Highway was done this past Friday, November 3rd. The Massachusetts State Agency under the Department of Health for Interior Air Quality did the inspection and air quality testing. We will receive a full report, and this will be done at no cost to the town. The one recommendation which was provided the day of the testing was to eliminate the carpeting in the two office areas. Novus, our contracted IT vendor for the server and Microsoft 365 conversion, completed the final file migration for our IT platform conversion of servers over this past weekend of November 3rd through November 6th. On Monday, all Town Hall employees with computers restarted their PCs to complete the migration process. There were a few bumps on Monday, but nothing terrible. There is still a few steps still to be done for final completion and a few uses which will still be, which will still have to be addressed outside the original scope of this project. And then just for your information, we have an infamous individual here tonight with us. Let you know, if you have not read The Beacon as of yet, please make sure to go to page 33 and notice the article and the photo of our Highway Superintendent, Randall Kemp, who gave a presentation for the Chapter 90 funding, which is important to all of us, so thank you, Randall. Upcoming Select Board meetings, November 14th, a special one for signing of the warrant, and 21st, and Special Town Meeting Date, December 5th at Norris Elementary School.
Okay, good, thanks. Any questions, anybody?
My, my other question is, when the results come back on the air quality tests, everyone's gonna get them at the same time, right?
What's that?
Item number C, air quality testing, when the report comes back, we'll all get them at the same time. And by all, I mean Select Board and the Fire Chief, right? We're just, we're gonna get them at the same time. No one's gonna see them a week ahead of time and be able to ramp up things.
I know, I know I drove you nuts, John. They will be sent to everyone at the same time. When you open those packets or emails, there's a different, yes.
That's fair enough, okay. Thanks.
Good, okay. Anybody else? All right. Okay, Dan, how about some, any reports from any meetings that you've attended over the last couple weeks?
Yeah, so I was talking about the Technology Committee, one thing that we are looking into, and we had, oh, sorry, I always forget that part. So, the Technology Committee, we, we had a meeting with the librarian to talk about if there's some beneficial technology uses for the, I call it the conference room that you see as you walk into the right in the library. So Joanna had some ideas, and we have some ideas, and I got an email from East Hampton Public Media because we want to include them in that decision-making process, because hopefully we can make it into another available conference room, perhaps for our town meetings and other uses. So that, that was reported on, and Ed had some good things to say about Novus, that was also something the Technology Committee.
The problem is not talking, we have to hear you here.
Oh, oh.
Just to keep the mic right near you, you don't have to.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy the ones that clip onto me, that's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay, so really, I was just reporting on the Technology Committee.
Yep.
And, and the work that had been completed there.
Right.
That's all I have to say about that.
Okay, any other committee meetings? No?
That's it.
Okay. Steven?
Which was his planning board?
Your planning board, that's what, your, your planning board, so I didn't say anything about it.
All right, so, the Planning Board took up a proposed bylaw revision for the groundwater protection district, and voted it down because there was not a clear presentation of how that benefited the town across the board. It was clearly beneficial to one applicant, but we lacked the kind of detail that we would like to understand that proposal in more of a regional context. What we heard along the way is that the several communities that overlay the Barnes Aquifer have relatively different provisions, not only for prohibited uses, but where they prohibit the use, and whether they differentiate between, everybody has to protect Zone 1, right around the wellhead, it's a defined radius. Beyond that, Zone 2 is demonstrated to directly contribute to the well, Zone 3 is other permeable land. So, Dan and I have undertaken the, the request to look at our neighboring communities and how they approach these differing levels of protection by how critical the land area is to the aquifer, and then the nature of the land use. We heard an awful lot about improvements in gasoline technology, but that really is outside of the issues in our bylaw. So, we're a little frustrated, and we're gonna have to come back and see if there's something useful we can do with groundwater protection bylaws. See, Dan would like to add.
I just want to clarify one statement, that we didn't vote down the proposal that Big Y was putting forward. All we said was that the bylaw that was, we were only evaluating the bylaw change that was, that was submitted, so, not specifically.
Yes, Dan, that's very important to point out. We were talking about a bylaw change that would affect the entire town. It was several times characterized as a proposal by a particular landowner proponent, and that was not really the issue the Planning Board had in front of them.
For those who may not have known about the hearing or attended that, what was the, what was the proposed project, I guess? What was, what was it supposed to do?
Dan?
You mentioned gasoline, so was it a gas station?
All right, so where the existing car wash is, and I'll not get the name, and the True Heart Paving Company behind, and the pool.
Yep.
Hot tub accessory, those three businesses on one property would be redeveloped, keeping the car wash, and substituting for the pool facility and True Heart, a convenience store, and it would be part of the Big Y network, so it'd be Big Y Express and Big Y Gas.
And Big Y Gas?
Yes.
I see, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, all right, any other meetings?
Open Space Committee meets Thursday night, and will be picking up the beat where the Community Preservation Committee left off, and racing towards getting word out about Special Town Meeting and the Mountain Waters Project, which I know we're gonna hear more about.
Okay, good. John?
Mine, Finance Committee met on Monday, I wasn't, last Monday, I wasn't able to go because I had to be at an all-district meeting with the ongoing issues of Central Office. PPP has not met since our last meeting. They are scheduled, we are scheduled to meet a week from today, on Wednesday night, instead of our regular Thursday. Capital met, but I was away for work, and their results are in our meeting for consideration tonight. Norris did meet, and one of the big things coming out of that is the School Committee voted to authorize the building, our building principal to solicit support and guidance from our Town Administrator on the replacement of the preschool van, and I believe there's an article coming up later on, on that as well. The, the van is up for inspection in the month of November, and at that point, it has to come off the road. It won't legally pass. So luckily for us, Hampshire Regional has a van that is not currently being used, that they will loan us until we can acquire a preschool version of it, so we won't have to stop transportation of preschool kids while we work on this issue.
Mm-hmm, wow, okay. Always something new that comes up.
I love the schools.
Indeed, okay, all right. And lastly, on my end, the Grant Committee has been working primarily, Kate Rooks has been lead on working with the COA on putting in a grant for Continued Memory Cafe as well as outreach programming. Those should go in, if not tomorrow, then the following day, those will be submitted. Total is around $14,000, $15,000 for the two. Total is around $14,000, $15,000 for the two. There is a Cost Efficiencies Meeting tomorrow afternoon, a regular Cost Efficiencies Meeting at 3:00. And then, as was mentioned earlier, we've actually asked that the heads of Water, Highway, Cemetery, and Parks join us for a meeting on, and the town moderator, join us for a meeting on the 15th, I believe at 6:00 PM, to talk about the 2016 report that talked about the restructuring of government and the idea of looking at combining certain departments for more efficiency and ease of recruiting people and having people serve in town government. And the idea would be to take a look at whether it makes sense to combine Highway Water, in particular Parks and Cemetery, into a DPW, as many other towns have. And this was a recommendation that came up in 2016 and never really, I guess somebody can tell us the history when we have that meeting, but it apparently never took a lot of, never got much traction, and maybe it was not the right timing for that kind of thing. So, in part of the charge of the Cost Efficiencies Committee, we thought we would take that up again and take a closer look at that and see if it makes any more sense now or not, given some of the challenges we all have at recruiting members for our various committees, maintaining quorums to even have committee meetings. It's been a constant struggle over the last year at least, just trying to get people to step up and serve town government. So, we thought we'd take a look at that. So that's pretty much what's, what's happening, okay? Good, all right. Moving on. So, we don't have any appointments or resignations now. I know we have two people I see in the audience. I'm assuming one is here for the Assessor's PCF, yeah? And then we have for the article on the town meeting for the Mountain Waters Project, yeah? Okay. I'm going to ask somebody to make a motion to move something ahead.
I move that we take the Mountain Waters Project out of order and all that that means, because what I see on our agenda is not really adequately descriptive of what I think we're going to hear.
Okay. Anybody have any objections to that? Joy, I'm not seeing. We have two choices, yeah? That's one choice, yeah? Okay.
Well, no, I'm, so you just want to take up that one specific article?
One article and then come back to the others? I mean, my, my other comment though was going to be, Steven, I don't disagree with you, but we have only one personnel change form here, one PCF, and we have the Assessor's representative sitting here. I think it might be good to try and take that up first, because I don't think that would take quite as long as we get into the Special Town Meeting warrant.
I'll defer to you.
All right. Does anybody object to that?
Nope.
All right, let's do that. So, we had last meeting in your package, we had a meeting, sorry, a request for, boy, let me find it, hold on. Yeah, we had a request, a personal change form for our current admin assistant in the Assessor's Office, and this had gone through, PQB had been signed off on PQB, and the request was to, I believe, change the salaries for this individual from 1,876 to 2,175. And that night, unfortunately, John was not here as part of PQB, who had attended the meeting, and we didn't have anybody else here to kind of speak to that. So, since I see Darcy here, please introduce yourself and your role in this case and maybe talk to us a little bit about it. We decided to postpone and not act on it because we didn't feel we had enough information for what was being asked.
I appreciate that, and I was out of the country, so I could not be here. So, Darcy Gasparini, Chair of the Board of Assessors. I just wanted to start, first of all, with a little bit of background about Janine. She started in 2006 with the Assessor's Department. She worked until 2014, when she was elected as the town clerk. She worked from 2014 to 2018 as the town clerk, retired in 2018, and then in 2020, came back to work in the Assessor's Office. So, she's been with the town for 15 years, she's been with the Assessor's Office for 10 years. She's completed tons of courses and credits to make herself more proficient in the office. She was hired as an administrative assistant, and with the lack of coverage and a full-time PA, she's taken on a lot more work. She now is doing the in lieu of taxes, she's doing the supplemental taxes, she's doing the community preservation. She helps the board immensely, keeping things on track and explaining a lot of this to us. She takes calls on her personal time, she's come in on weekends, she's just doing a lot more than she was originally hired for, and I just feel like this really is the right thing to do. She definitely deserves more, I wish I could give her more, but I encourage you guys to approve that.
And the number of weekly hours, just to clarify, is 12 to 15?
12 to 15.
It varies a little bit.
It varies a little bit, yeah.
Whatever's happening.
And we have the money and the budget, so it's, it's not like we're going to be asking for anything to cover that cost.
Okay, all right. John?
Just to be clear, the title would not change.
Not at this point, no.
This would be administrative assistant at a grade and a step that you have alluded to, you feel that years of service and some trainings justify the increase in.
Correct.
Or only step, and, and how did you find support for that in the?
So, we, we went to PQB with that, and because of the additional work she's doing, the years of service, all of her accomplishments, that's the number that we came to with the grade and step.
So I can probably add to that. There was, it looks like you guys acted on it, there was another PCF or a PRF.
Right.
It didn't come into us, yeah.
You didn't get a PRF to approve?
No.
For permission to post?
No.
No.
Where'd it go? PPQ approved it?
Jones approved it to the PPPV.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't get anything.
That was, that I believe was.
Fresh money memory.
Cindy went to the meeting, I was not around, but I believe it was tabled because of the Collins study.
Gotcha, okay. So, the, the overall arching plan here is to attempt to move away from the previous year's plan to go fully contracted. They now don't believe that that is the viable option, and they want to go in-house. So there is a PRF that is out there that, I guess, is on hold, either we're going to, either we are sending it to the Collins to have it added to it, or, or what the case may be on that. But that person, it's basically adding another person in the office to do that piece to alleviate some of the workload on this individual so that this individual can go do more higher end or mid-level that she holds the licensing and the certificates on. Because then here, there's, there's a DOR class in the job description, and I believe it was represented to us that she is, she currently holds it.
Yes.
Now, we'd also heard that there were some licenses though that she had not kept up, right?
The course 101, she did not keep up her assessors.
Correct.
But she doesn't need that for.
So there must have been somebody here speaking on behalf of it, one way or the other, if that piece of news got to you guys. But regardless, she's got the course, the course 101, and prior to assessors coming up, there was another position before us that we had to put on the scale, and it came down to basically, under the current rules, PPP sets the grade, and then the step is up to, the department head to justify what it needs to be, as long as they can get, they can get everybody to go along with it. And there was, and I'm drawing a blank on what that position was. It wasn't in the Assessor's Office.
Was it the Highway Administrator?
No.
Assistant?
No, it was somebody that had money in their budget.
COA Director.
Program Coordinator.
Program Coordinator of the COA. And being able to come in, not coming in a step one, came in a step four, and if you looked at the job description, I want to say, again, I'm going off memory, that you had, you had to have an associate, but this person had a bachelor, so if you have bachelors, you can get two more steps because of the change in the degrees and that. We went through a big conversation on that, and that got approved, and then the Assessor's ones came up, and basically the logic was the same logic we applied to the end. If you look at this individual, and you say, how many years of experience in this job do they have? It was, I just heard 10 tonight, but for some reason, we must have heard 12 that night because we went, because that's the only latitude that PPP has. Once the grade's set, do, if you're asking for a deviation in, within the grade on your steps, you, you have to justify how you're coming up with that higher number. And again, without looking at the minutes, because I, I don't believe there was objection to this vote. I believe it went through unanimously. To go with the 12 on this individual, and we made note that the new position being created was going to be capped at the 1,876, you know, so it was going to create this like layer system in there.
So it's kind of a backfill, I mean, if I'm hearing, it would be another, another PRF for this same titled position, and then a new PF, PRF.
The PRF's going to be a different title, but it's in the same, it's probably going to be in the same, if we use the current grading system we have, it would be a grade two.
I see, okay, I got you, okay. Yeah, no, I think from what you said, Darcy, so six to 14, so that's, that's eight years, and then 20 to now, so it's almost 11 years.
She's been, yeah, yeah, I kind of just.
And not counting the, the time in the town clerk's office.
Correct.
Which was another four hours, sorry, four years.
Right, was another four years.
Just keeping within the Assessor's Office role.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody, so I think that was just our question, just, we just wanted to understand the justification for the, the change in the steps and the, the amount of hourly wage change, as was being proposed from, from what was on the PRF, PCF, sorry. Yes, Ed?
And I'll just bring up the issue I brought up at the last meeting, only I won't be anywhere near as adamant about it tonight, and that is the issue that, okay, there are other individuals here that are in similar situations, so I believe it's only fair to, if you're going to do this, that you go back and look at all those other individuals and do the same thing for them and find a way to fund it.
This is the part that confuses me, isn't this something we do on a yearly basis? Why are we, why do we do this in the middle of the year?
No.
We don't do it on a yearly basis, unfortunately.
So what, so one of the downfalls of our antiquated system.
System.
Because the PPP is a, is a, based off a 1970 federal employment hiring standard.
Great year.
How that applies to us, whatever, but that's what's the law of the books right now. The, once you're on your grade and in a step, you can only go up, in theory, you should go up a whole step, but because our scales were so far apart, we didn't even do that. We just, we stopped at that two and a half, and that's been the mantra, which over the past 20 years, to the Highway Superintendent's point, has driven our compatibility or competitiveness down, because we're not keeping up with, two and a half percent doesn't keep up with historical trends. And the only way to, the only recourse in the book right now is to, you really have to rewrite the job description and try to get a higher score. But then you run into problems where, do you have, as an example, this is not what you're asking, but we, all the admin assistants, for the most part, are on a grade two.
Appreciate what you're teaching, so go ahead.
No, on a grade two. So how do you rewrite one admin assistant if the two others are all on that grade two, and you make that one a grade three? Well, should the others be a grade three? Which is why this whole thing needs to go, and two years ago, we, I started down this road with the Collins, and we're going to get that flipping report.
We're going to get it, we're going to get it.
Which is going to reset all this, and my guess is.
Next month, I guess, next month.
Well, and for budget season going forward, hopefully it will. I think one thing, I guess I would push back a little bit, my understanding on this one, I know we've got others that are admin assistants, this position, from my understanding, is at least it'll be a little bit similar to perhaps your TA in terms of the confidentiality requirement for the position, for one. And we've got a different situation, I think, than many admin assistants, where this person is actually, pretty much, given that there is not a principal assessor, except for, I'm not even sure how many hours a week these days, that person is, is filling in a role, not working side by side with somebody on a daily basis. So I think there's a little, a level of responsibility that's more.
Compelling the problem.
More specific to, to the person in the office at that time.
And I've, you know, I've held, I've held the line and I've agreed with, I've had the same opinion as a town administrator until the past 60 days, where we need the Collins report, we need to do a reset across the board. But honestly, we said we wanted that last December for the budget. And, you know, it's going, and the Collins is doing what they're doing, and hopefully they're going to give us something that we can actually use, unlike the HR report that they gave us, that was useless on day of delivery. But we have to get that, we said we're going to do this, it's been two years, we got to get this, and meanwhile, these one-by-ones are going to come up, and frankly, anybody else that's in this situation, they should go to the department head and try to force the issue. You're also in a unique, sorry, you're in a unique position because you have a vacancy, so there's available funds. You know, I'll tell you, he's sitting here now, the Highway Superintendent shows up at every PPP, he advocates for his, for his employees to move, but because he's got all his employees in one line item, and then another employee in a single line item, there's nothing you can do without a budget increase. Unlike, you know, the police, for all the right reasons, they can move their, the police officer here, and they're all grouped together, and dispatches are grouped together.
Okay.
I'll stop.
Okay, yes.
Hi, Janet Kane, Glendale Road, former member of the Board of Assessors here when Janine was hired for the administrative assistant position. And as John kind of spoke to, at the time, steps weren't looked at, or former years in town weren't looked at. She probably, in hindsight, if we could have hired her at, at her current, the steps she deserved to be at when she was hired initially, we wouldn't, you know, be in this situation. So, having been there and been part of the hiring group, I'm just thankful for the town for taking the initiative and looking at the steps and the years of experience. And the position she was hired for, file some papers, answer some phones, greet people at the counter, is certainly not the job she's doing today. So, I just wanted to give a little background.
And to reiterate the, the question which I was corrected on before, just so that I'm sure, I'm sure that I'm, what I'm hearing is the same, it's not a matter of her having enough hours, it's a matter of her performing more technically higher level of duty during the hours in which she's working.
Correct.
So it wouldn't be like, if we gave her another five hours a week, that she'd be able to do it. It's, the work she's doing is more technical.
Correct. She's doing above and beyond what she was hired to do.
I'm going to hear the same thing again.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? If not, did we have a motion?
My only question, can somebody tell me what the first day, what is the calendar date of the current payroll that we're in right now? So we can make that the effective date.
It would have been this past Sunday.
11:05.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve this PCF effective 11:05 for Janine Domina to go from a grade two, step seven, to a grade two, step 12, which gives her a new hourly rate of 21.75.
Okay.
Don't use per hour, second.
All right, all right. Any other discussion? If not, I don't know, I gather Joy may be listening, but we don't have her.
Don't, Joy left at eight.
She's gone, okay. All right. Okay, so all those in favor by roll, oh, well, do we need roll call now?
Yes.
We do, so, okay. Roll call vote, please.
No, you don't anymore. I'm sorry.
We don't, she's gone. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. I hear no opposed, okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, I wasn't sure if Joy was still with us, listening or not.
She texted me.
Okay, sorry, okay.
Chair, point of order, if we can go out of order.
Yes.
And take up a single article for consideration under the title, Community Preservation, Mountain Water Projects, Crystal Land Trust.
Yes, well, yes, okay. We have a motion, second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Please, come on up.
Now, you're supposed to be the shorter one, so.
I'll do my best here. Hi, everyone.
Thank you for being patient and waiting through this entire meeting here.
Of course. I'm Bridgette Likely, I'm a Conservation Manager at Castro Land Trust, and I'm just here to, once again, update folks on the Mountain Waters Projects. As we spoke about last Select Board Meeting, the town and Castro Land Trust and its partners were recently awarded the State Landscape Partnership Grant towards the Mountain Waters Project, which overall is seeking to protect over 1,000 acres of land, primarily in Southampton, as well as the towns of West Hampton and Montgomery. The award is for over $1 million from the state. Total costs for this project are over $3 million, so we've secured additional, hold on, let me make sure I'm getting my, my numbers accurate here. An additional $1,286,285 in additional private and state funding secured to help match the state partnership grant, but we're also seeking 460. 420,688 from the Community Preservation Act funds from the town of Southampton, which will support the town's interest in 731 acres of land in the town, both fee ownership and conservation restrictions. This represents approximately a 12% match to the, the funding, so leveraging a lot of funds towards land that will serve both public access, drinking water quality, wildlife corridor protection, climate resilience, a number of benefits. Just a few highlights of some of these lands includes Glendale Ridge Vineyard, which I know is a landmark in the community and enjoyed by a lot of the public here. Also, what will become the largest public recreation area in Southampton, spanning into West Hampton, totaling over, let's see, what my acreage is here, 382 acres, and then also protecting the summit of Pomeroy Mountain, which would be 150 acres, 135 in Southampton. So we're attempting to secure this CPA funding at the special town meeting in December. I've sent draft language to Ed for the town warrant, which he's reviewed with town council, and I just want to take this opportunity tonight to answer any questions about the project or the article itself. It's actually split into two articles that count for the difference between the land the town will be acquiring in fee, owning in whole, versus what they'll be taking conservation restrictions on.
Great.
I think it's very interesting to have the vote split that way by the type of interests in land as opposed to acquiring land and approving funding. So it's a lawyer and moderator question, thank you for following the detail. I saw latest revisions today. Has the state blessed this yet, or are we still waiting for the state?
The state still needs to give its final review, but the draft language that I sent to Ed is based on their template.
You started with that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. It is an amazing project, it's diverse in the types of resources that it protects from one end of the town to the other, and you can't argue with the value. And the fact that we're fortunate at this point in time to have enough funds in the Community Preservation Committee Fund, undesignated, ready for this purpose, it's a tremendous opportunity. Thank you and everyone in town who brought it to this point. Most especially, thank you for the landowners' willingness to take this visionary step and bind themselves and all future heirs in this kind of selfless conservation for the benefit of all, for wildlife habitat, for clean water, for outdoor recreation, and the scenic views that are a large part of why we're all here, so.
Very good.
And what you have in your packets is actually.
Yep.
The draft language that Bridget had sent me, that it was amended by town council. And since that time that I got that, and it hasn't been updated since, is both Mark Cassis and Bridget have commented and clarified on a couple of things that I will send back to Katie.
Okay, yeah, so with all the, all the track changes, it'll be town council that will finally accept the changes, right? I mean.
Yeah.
Basically, okay.
One would assume, okay.
We have the, the most recent version with mine and Mark's edits here, if that's useful now, or you'd rather just wait for, for Ed to send that along once we've.
That's good, we've got one that's marked up, so it'll come back to us at some point, but you could, you could, you know, make it available, sure. So just, just clarity, so thousands some acres, yes?
Uh, overall, yeah, between the three towns.
Okay, and then the, the 420,000 being asked for from community preservation is obviously only for certain parcels in Southampton.
Solely for, yeah, Southampton's interests.
Okay, yep.
So two questions.
Yep.
First question, just follow up on that. What, what happens if, the other two towns involved are West Hampton and.
Montgomery.
Montgomery. What happens if we pass approved CPA funds and one of those or both of those towns do not?
So we're, yeah, we're not asking CPA funds from Montgomery and West Hampton, I don't believe Montgomery has CPA. And then just the way the rest of the funding worked out, we're able to cover the, the much more minimal acreage in, in West Hampton and Montgomery.
So West Hampton and Montgomery residents don't have to pitch anything in?
No.
So they won't have CPA funding?
Yeah, but let's be, let's be true where CPA is coming from. CPA is a tax on the.
No, no, but they, those, those other parcels won't have CPA funding, those are private donors, is that what you said? Or did I miss?
Correct, yeah, so.
But CPA, conservation restriction is not just through getting the land, it's also the maintenance of the conservation restriction over time, so we'd be maintaining lands in other towns at our expense.
No.
Who's going, who maintains the conservation restriction?
So the, the land in Montgomery and in West Hampton is not going to be held, those interests will not be held by the town of Southampton, so they'll have no management burdens for those lands.
Who are they going to be held by?
In West Hampton, it's going to be held by Kestrel Land Trust in fee, the CR is going to be held by Mass Audubon. In Montgomery, the land's going to be held by State Department of Fish and Game, Mass Wildlife.
So we, all right, so flip side of this, if we didn't have the CPA funds either available to use, or if we wanted to use them on another project, and we say we fell $100,000 short, what would happen to the project? If we don't, I think the ask is 420?
Yep.
So if we could only approve 320, what, what do we do with that other 100? Wait for another donation?
So it would be a significant setback to it, we would do our best effort to fundraise privately with foundations or, or other donors, but, you know, we certainly have already raised a significant amount through private and other state matching.
Just remind me what the total, what the total cost is?
The total cost for the, the whole project, all three towns, is 3,521,900 dollars.
Okay. And then my other question, within this, within the town of Southampton's portion of land that falls within our boundaries, is, I believe, and if I'm getting the two projects confused, just tell me, but within this project, isn't there a parcel that's been identified by the city of Hoyoke and the water department that they would like?
Correct, and no CPA funds are going towards that acquisition.
Okay. If it's Southampton property, right now, correct?
No, private property.
It's a private owner.
Okay, but it's going to come in, it's within the boundaries of the town of Southampton, right? Does the property owner care whether it goes to the city of Hoyoke Water Department, or if it goes to the Southampton Water Department to protect it?
I mean, at this current moment, we have negotiated with the landowners to go towards drinking water protection for the city of Hoyoke.
Right, but couldn't the Southampton Water Department maintain that same standard?
Oh, Southampton, well, it's not for Southampton's water supply, so that's why it's Southampton.
But is it, is it or is it not part of the feed system that goes into Hoyoke?
It's for Ty Carney Reservoir, yes, which serves Hoyoke, so that's why.
Right, which we're entitled to 300,000 gallons a year off that system, so that, in essence, is our emergency backup.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I have a problem with how the city of Hoyoke and the Hoyoke Water Department has treated the relationship in Southampton from the start. To support something, to give them more land, and to send more environmental police officers up here to harass the citizens, I, I'm not saying I'm against this project, but I'm against that particular piece of it.
Okay, understood, but just, again, to be clear, the Community Preservation Act funds wouldn't go towards that acquisition.
Ed just had his hand up for a while.
It's okay, it's kind of sleep. I just wanted to follow up on an earlier question that John asked, and if we didn't have 420,000 and only had 320,000, what would happen to the project? I am going to suppose here, because early on, when the price tag was up further, is the CPC may have come back and asked to put similar articles on this warrant, however, might have broken it out so that whatever the dollar amount, if we didn't have it in full, was basically borrowed from CPC funds over a period of years.
So that was, I'm trying to, one question, at one point, I think Cindy maybe had told us that this money could be allocated over a two-year period, is that?
Yeah, so the, the grant is allocated over a two-year period, so we're closing on the first half of the acquisitions by June 30th of this year, and then we have until June 30th of 2025 to close on the rest.
So is the full 420 required now, or?
Yes, in order to enter the contract with the state for the grant, they need to know that the funding is secured at this point.
But the funding could be secured by us voting to pledge next year's receipts as a portion of it, and as long as we have that vote on record to show those two years and based on our incomes, it would meet their qual, their standard at the state level to show that the money's in place.
I see.
We don't have to physically write the check on day one.
Yeah, you know, I got it, okay, yeah, okay, yeah. Mark, you want to say something?
Just to address some of your concerns, my understanding is the.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Mark Cassis, 19 Foma Road, speaking as a member of the Community Preservation Committee who voted to approve the 420,000. My understanding is there, the state grant had to be voted on by the town by the end of December 31st, 2023, to get the 1 to, 1.25 million dollars. If we don't pass this, that, that grant is lost, or they have to reapply for that. And the, part of the grant is, it is a partnership grant, so part of this was they need to show partnership of multiple people, not just Southampton, but part of involvement of Hoyoke Water Works. Even though I agree with you, I don't feel uncomfortable, that is, they were part of the ability to get the grant, was showing that they're partners at multiple levels. So there's, I agree with some of your discomfort, and if we hold it up for that, then we can lose the whole package, which I would encourage the town not to do, even though I, I agree.
I, I think, I think if, if that one piece comes to light, I, I think if you took a pulse of the town, it's going to be a, a sticking point at the ballot box. I mean, if you can, if you can leave that off the record, and I'll stop talking about it, but if you, if you leave City of Hoyoke out of it, you probably have a better chance. But just remember, there was, there was a point in time where they attempted to annex us, you know, so.
But right, right now, the grant is for the three towns, not, correct? It's just, yeah, okay.
But where the other ones at the front of money? As a town?
Right, from the town point, yes, yes, yeah, Dan.
So having, having a conservation restriction that spans multiple towns is something I've never experienced before, so I'm, ask a couple simple questions to help me understand. Would the uses, would, would all those land, all the lands with multiple towns, including the part contributed by Hoyoke Water Works in South, that's in Southampton, have the same use rights?
So they're not all going to be under one conservation restriction, so each piece of land will have its own conservation restriction that will be tailored to the management goals of that land, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So one may be towards water protection, one may be towards public recreation, who knows?
Exactly.
And those CRs actually come to this, to select board at some point in the future?
Yes.
It's not, we don't have to approve CRs now, we're just, we're approving the acquisition at this point, okay, I got it.
That's a very important point, Chair, because some of these have not been finally negotiated to the degree that we were just discussing. Dan was talking about, you know, the various flavors of conservation restriction, and a lot of the fine print is yet to be written. Both the Conservation Commission and the Select Board under state law have to review and sign off on each individual instrument. So right now, what we're really talking about is the design of the project as a whole, what the totality of the town's financial outlay would be.
Right.
And then any other questions or implications about going down this path in toto.
Yep.
But the details of each individual transaction will come back to this board after they've, well, sequencing is another question, they'll also go to the Select, Conservation Commission.
Right, okay, good, thank you.
So I guess I, I wonder, I wonder a little bit about the other towns involved, like Russell, why were they chosen to.
Montgomery.
Montgomery, sorry, to get their, their, I would think, is it, is it funding through, you mentioned like fish and wildlife versus?
The town isn't receiving funding, they're, it's just, Department of Fish and Game is taking, is buying that land, they will own that land and manage it. And that has been, that land has been on Department of Fish and Game's radar for a while.
So they're interested?
They have an interest in that land specifically.
So that, that meets the goal of bringing multiple parties involved, of meeting the overall structure of this, okay.
Yep.
I get it.
Great.
Okay, yeah, any last question?
Just, well, just to clarify, so there is a, under new business, is there anything else we need to talk about on Conservation Commission authorization to hold and co-hold that relates to the speaker?
That's what I thought was.
Do you see it, it's, it's right, right underneath the articles.
It'll come up individually.
Under new business on the agenda?
Yeah, the, the authorization of the Conservation Commission to hold the CRs and the pertinent properties may be tied into this, I think, is that where you're going, John?
Yeah, I just, we don't have it, the, right above senior center building update. Look at the bullet point about that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think to the extent that that is current, ripe for action, it's dealt with in the town meeting warrant articles. No, it's, it's right of the, that particular one is given by the Select Board.
Yeah.
Not by town meeting, but I, I didn't know if, question wise, do we want to, does the Select Board want to talk about that while Kestrel's still here? I think it's not ripe, I think we need to see each one, even as much as we're in support of the overall program.
Yeah, I mean, it, it just, I guess that was part of my question, so whether Concom or somebody else holds the CR, that's a step further down, or if Concom, Concom and the town, or some, comes somebody else, Concom and somebody else would co-hold, I'm sorry, Bridget, you can talk.
Yes, no, sorry.
Concom on behalf of the town and potentially.
Okay.
Yeah, so some of the CRs that are with private landowners, because we're using CPA funds, even though Kestrel is going to be the primary conservation restriction holder, and take the responsibility of monitoring and all that, because CPA funds being used, the town must have an interest, and so that's why there'll be a co-holder, so that's what we're seeking, I think, approval for. But to your point, my understanding was that would come at the point where the, the conservation restriction is ready to be.
When it's all fleshed out, I mean, we've.
Okay, so, so we don't have to do that now?
So we don't have to do that right now, okay, that's what I was confused on too, because I, I know we've seen conservation restrictions on other properties that have come before us, but it's, you know, it's pretty detailed, it's, you know, 20 pages per.
Yes, yeah.
Per CR, in terms of, you know, you can do this, but you can't do this, and, and all that, so that's going to come later.
Yeah, I guess the, just on that note, when it does become pertinent.
Yep.
I guess I'd, I'd want to see some sort of wording, if it's not already in there, that if we, if we're going to cede authority to the Conservation Commission, then there needs to be a clause in there, that in event, at the time action is needed, Concom cannot meet quorum, then it'll default back to the Select Board. Right, I don't want to, to give power to a committee that may be defunct at the point in time it's needed, knowing how we need 157 volunteers to run for office every year.
Yeah.
This is safety net.
Yeah, okay, let me get to that point, yeah, okay.
Well, I may not be here.
Well, we, we appointed Joyce.
It could be a year from now, new elections.
Oh, yeah, well.
You'll still be here, Chris.
Get out of here, all right, okay, so I think that, yeah, I think we don't have to take up that issue right now, I think that, that was part of my confusion earlier on as to whether we had to talk about who's holding what CR right now, and it sounds like we don't, so that's fine. So I think we've got the language we need, hopefully, thanks for, you and Mark for drafting it all, and Mark Wamsley involved as well, I'm sure, and Ed for getting it on to KP Law to put their little red pen through, and hopefully we're close to a, a reasonable final version that we can put on the town warrant, so that's the plan anyway, okay?
And the open space committee will enthusiastically take up the charge this Thursday in the interest of getting the word out for special town meeting, because it all matters unturned out, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Good, thanks very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate your sitting through the meeting as well.
Thanks, Bridget.
All right. Okay, so with that, we are on the new business part, and it is really the articles for town meetings, so Ed, you want to walk through this whole list here that you've developed?
Sure. So.
A new package, guys, in your, Ed handed out tonight?
Yep. It's in your packet, or, actually, it wasn't in your packets, it was a separate handout. Proposed articles for special town meeting, first one is previous fiscal year unpaid bills, there are six of them, Western Mass Fire Prevention, Amazon, fiscal year '23 school transportation fees, Westfield Technical Academy student tuition, Rocky's.
Westfield Technical Academy student tuition, Rocky's Ace Hardware, which was the water department, I believe, and then McKesson, which is fire EMS. And then, don't pay a lot of attention to the exact language below that. That's draft language at this point in time, and it'll be amended.
So these are bills that didn't come in in time to, for closing the fiscal year, is that it?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on that one? We have the various invoices in the package here to support that, for our information.
Yeah, the next is the Community Preservation, Mountain Waters, Project, Kestrel Land Trust, the two drafts that we just talked about, the Select Board just talked about.
I wonder about this, I should say Kestrel Land Trust, after the conversation we just had. If we're saying the conservation restriction would be assigned, it's really approval of the CPA fund. Maybe we're confusing the issue for people or giving them false information by saying that.
Huh?
Kestrel, right? You're saying, you're saying Kestrel, right, that is going to be the, and what we just spoke about was who would hold conservation restriction.
Don't pay any attention to what that summary says, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
No, and we have, we just said that Kestrel, I mean, the actual CR language of who's holding what. I mean, I think, is that, that's not the special town meeting, though?
Yeah, it is.
That is a topic. I thought we were just approving the CPC funds for the land. We're going to approve the conservation restriction.
You're doing a lot of things in these two articles. You're approving CPC funds, you're acquiring land, which is a two-thirds votes, and then in a separate article, you're doing a fee for the, shall we say, acquisition or assignment of conservation restrictions.
Okay, so there's a lot there.
Yeah, there's a lot there.
Thank you.
And at one point, I was actually thinking it might get broken up into three rather than two, so.
I think you understand why I was a little confused.
Well, Dan, you're not too far away from where I am on this whole project.
Yeah, and I guess, though, I'm still, from what I just thought I heard, though, that, I guess I thought that the whole CR thing was not part of this meeting coming up.
I'm just pointing out what's on the agenda.
Well, don't forget, this is templates that the state requires the language in.
But I think we may not have to take that up, the CR holding, because a lot of this is not, she said each, each parcel is going to have its own CR.
Right.
So I don't think we're-
Exactly.
Maybe not on the, on the warrant. The acquisition and the use of CPC funds definitely is on the agenda.
I think when we endorse the article, or the two articles for acquiring CRs and acquiring fee interest, we will have accomplished this.
Right.
Perhaps, yeah.
Exactly.
Good. All right, moving on.
The next one is a request for police department interdepartmental transfers. And not surprising, because we've heard about it before, and it's due to the police overtime, due to the, shall we say, staffing issues.
And just so I don't have to ask the question every single time as we go through this, but all the funding sources that are listed in here have the available money, have the available funds, as best we know?
Yes.
Right, okay.
At this point in time, yes.
Yeah, well.
Or in the near future.
Our expense reports up to date? Kidding. Go ahead.
November 2nd is the last one I saw.
I can actually, that one actually brings a smile to my face, John, so. I need all the smiles I can get.
I like where we're going next with the highway department.
Highway, highway department interdepartmental transfers. Let's see.
14, that seems-
First, first funding source is free cash. Do we have free cash certified yet?
We don't. And that, and that's actually, it's not coming from free cash, that's coming from the capital requests, so.
Wasn't that request more than $14,000?
It was, it was seventeen something.
Seventeen something, yeah. This was done early on.
Okay. So, and again, this was to, the way I think you explained it to me, this was a truck that had been approved a couple of years ago that was going to be bought?
It's an F-350 that was approved, I believe, at the May 2021 annual town meeting.
Special, outside the debt limit, one-time purchase.
One-time, one-time purchase, capital funds, and we-
We got around to ordering it.
Bid it, quoted it off, I believe, was it Plymouth County? Order went in, I don't know, six months, eight months down the road, Randall got a notification that Ford had canceled the order on us, or?
It was a little longer, so, it was during COVID.
If you remember, supply chain started drying up, so time went by, time went by. I think it was a year and a half later, they call, they notified, they, MHQ, the vendor, notified us that Ford had canceled the order, and then provided us with a new proposal, which was more.
Right.
For the new model number, that they, or new model year that they could get it.
And is whoever, is this price guaranteed? I mean, because since then, Ford's gone through an eight-week walkout and increased costs. I mean, do we know this price is still good?
This is the quote that Randall just got, and if this passes at the special town meeting, he will immediately sign, or I will immediately sign that quote.
And it's coming, and the funding source is going to be capital stabilization?
Yes, it is, which is, will be a two-thirds majority.
Okay, so not from free cash, okay.
No.
Okay, got it.
Randall, while you're up there, I'm going to ask you a question about the culvert one, so.
Yep.
Have you met Jake Lee in, of the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Okay, great, because he taught classes on culvert assessments, so I'm sure you know that.
He did a stint in the Department of Environmental Conservation, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, I took his class.
The culvert, municipal culvert program is kind of where it was.
I just want to make sure you already knew about that connection, and if there's anything that could, part of that connection that could help with-
Actually, so that's what we're trying to get with this asset management grant. We're trying to get a program to prioritize the culverts that will then make us eligible for more grant funding. So that's the goal, is to try and get, get money.
When you're trying, first, you're inventorying, if we get the grant, right? I mean, well, we do have the grant, right?
Yes.
But it's going to be to inventory all the culverts in town, right?
Yeah, inventory and map them and inspect, kind of.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't have to say anything, you're the new, what I was talking about.
So is this the $14,000 one here?
Yes.
Transfer for funding of the culvert assessment cost? So this is, is this part of the grant?
This is part, go ahead.
Okay, so basically, this is, the original quotation we got had this work being done in-house. As I documented extensively, we're not able to do this in-house, so we have to have Ty and Bond do it. So this is an additional cost that was going to be done in-house, that's now going to be outsourced. And so we're taking the money from the wage account and transferring it to, to this purpose.
And this is different than the ARPA Fund one that we approved?
The ARPA was, yeah.
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The ARPA Fund one is the stormwater utility feasibility.
There was, I believe there was an ARPA component to this, too.
That's our match, I think, yeah. But I believe Chris was referring to the stormwater.
Okay.
Right. Got to pay for that street sweeper. Get that done, put the money in the bank.
Okay, so is the $14,000 the figure?
Yes, it is.
Do you anticipate this a one-time adjustment?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's just for the grant.
Yeah, so just it's one time, next year, we're going to put this $14,000 back in wages?
Yes.
Right, and, yeah.
All right, next?
So the next one would be, and I believe this was previously approved by PPPB, subject to funding, is that correct?
Partially.
Yeah, okay. For the, for the admin assistant highway wages.
It's an ongoing conversation I've been having with PPPB, and based on a recommendation from the Chair, we are, we are going to be submitting a PCF. It's still a discussion I want to have further talk on, but it would, it's using the same justifications as the PCF you guys signed tonight.
So one of his particular issues is he has a single line item, and while he has vacancies, they're not in that line item. So he can't use unspent funds for the mechanic, which is in the union section for the non-union personnel. So we can't even have the conversation because there's no funding source. So this is an attempt to get the funding source into the line item, so then he can come back and say, okay, I've got the funding, now I want to justify the, whatever X number of step-
Right.
Increase, based on the only avenue of recourse is years of experience in a similar job, da-da-da-da, with the same grade, and does their justification pass that committee? And then does it pass here? But he can't do anything without putting the money in the line item.
So right now, the general highway wage line covers who?
All his, all his union employees.
All the union guys.
It would cover the foreman-
Mechanic.
The mechanic and five, well, one laborer and four equipment operators, am I correct?
Yep. Okay, so because of those vacancies, you can move that money into this line?
To the admin assistant, and then once, if he gets this approved, then he has a funding source to come in and argue for an adjustment on the pay scale.
Yes, up to that amount, but I don't think it will be that amount.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I know, I know your assistant works in, or has worked in various positions around the, around town hall. I don't remember when she started at the water, highway department, rather, but.
A vigorous justification.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then, the next one, I wasn't aware of, is coming forward, but he's asking to return the original funding that was transferred to the highway department, to the Cemetery Commission for mowing and maintenance of $5,000.
This would, effective when?
Well, at, when it's transferred, it will be, it will be for the spring season.
Yeah.
So does Cemetery Commission aware that they're possibly have to take over lawn mowing, weed whacking, and?
No, let me give you a little history, if we can go put our wayback hats on. So we have, I'm well aware, we have mowed the cemetery. What we used to do is invoice the Cemetery Commission for mowing, several mowings. I think it was five or so mowings that we were budgeted for. As you know, and most people know, many of the residents want it mowed more frequently. Well, we've been struggling to keep up with it for years, and with the vacancies we've got right now, I was getting pulled off of road jobs, highway superintendent, highway jobs, to mow the cemetery. Now, I understand that it's important to a lot of people, so my proposal is to bring, if it can be done cheaper, if it can be contracted out, that's fine. But if you, if you can only do so many things, you've got to cut somewhere. So my proposal is to put the money back to the Cemetery Commission, and they can figure out how to get it mowed, to the satisfaction of the people that want it mowed.
How often do you mow now?
It depends. We, we were budgeted, like I said, for about five mowings, and I think we're mowing it seven, eight, nine times, and people are-
If, if you mowed it twice a month from May-
It's not weekly, for sure.
Until October, that's 12 alone. And I'll tell you, in the May-June timeframe and probably October timeframe, it probably should be done three times, you know, a month, so, I mean, and-
It's less frequent than your other properties, like the athletic fields and all that.
Well, only because, you know, people want it mowed every week. It's simply not something we're able to accomplish with our resources.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and the other thing is, either way, at this point in time, whether it's Cemetery Commission or the highway department, someone, someone with the staffing levels is going to have to-
Sure.
Contract it. You know, the other, other pieces, you could say, to the highway superintendent, at least for the rest of, you know, this year through June, and we can have the discussion in the departmental budget, is go ahead and contract this work for the rest of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay, but that's, my point was, this wasn't really our responsibility, so I'm trying to put it back where it came from.
Well, and, but as town administrator and listen, and I have to put everything, sorry, John, I have to put everything that's going on together. I know the ad hoc grant committee, and actually, I support the idea of trying to create a highway department, which would actually be putting this stuff, or, yeah, excuse me, public work.
Cemetery would fall under.
Which would put it all back together, and now, right before we're going to talk about that, you're going to tear it apart, that doesn't sit well with me.
If, then I, then I hope that there is a serious commitment to adequately staffing this department, because you can't just say we're going to be a DPW and then think it's going to work with the current staffing.
Yeah.
My whole point is that it's not.
Well, no, I mean, just, on that point, I agree, but everybody needs to come to the table with clear heads. Forget about the sins of the past, we don't want to hear about any highway-
I'm amenable to that, I'm completely amenable.
I don't want to hear about, I don't want to hear the name of any highway superintendent prior to you, from you four, not, you know, in 1972, this is, okay, well, that's great.
But it's all important, I mean, it's institutional knowledge of how we got to where we are.
It is, but-
You can only cut so many corners before you have a perfect circle.
Chris is about to get a lot of emotional people in a room together and try and hold it to a 90-minute meeting. We need to stay positive, and I can tell you publicly, right, I support this whole move. We need to consolidate, we need to reduce where possible the number of elected and appointed officials we have, because we're not getting them right now. So we got to work this out better, and.
The reason, the reason we've done it, unpaid volunteers, is because we're not paying people to do it. And so if you're going to, you're going to have to do, I just want to-
That's how I got elected two years ago, we're going to adjust the wages, and I'm still waiting on the Collins report.
We've made some adjustments.
Yeah, it may not even show up before I leave office.
So this was simply something I proposed, if it's not entertained, then that's, I mean, I'm not-
I think, personally, I would ask that you consider withdrawing this request for the points that Ed just made. I think if we're not successful between now and when we're doing the budget, I'll, I'll support moving this assignment in the next budget.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, I'm one voice.
I agree with that.
But to say, we got to break it up when the next sentence out of our mouth is, at the annual town meeting, is to be, now we want to bring all these groups together and eliminate all the, all the elected oversight of it.
John, you know I'm somewhat cynical, so. I'm going to come to the meeting, though, Chris, with a completely open mind.
And the highway superintendent also knows that the current town administrator also supports the thought of doing summer employees.
Right, to the point where you've agreed to stay on as volunteer, special liaison to help shuffle that through the process of retirement.
Actually, I would volunteer to do that, John.
Perfect.
Watch out.
So do you-
He'd be out there mowing the lawns, watch out.
Are you okay with us striking this on the special town meeting?
There are two departments here, here, that I would just love to come back and torture a little bit, and that, and they're both in this room tonight, so.
Well, we are possibly looking for an admin assistant for a base of fire.
All right, moving on. Thanks. Okay, so we're, so we have one list in our package that was separate from the actual agenda item one. So are we working on the, the single page in the package, just, this is the one we're working off of?
Well, yeah, and then it's got-
The one that you handed out separately.
And it's got some more detail behind it.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's fine. I was, I just want to be sure I'm catching them all here, yep.
There's fire department, and they didn't bring these forward, but I've, I've looked at, and their page from the most recent expense report is in here, and I'm looking at a couple of things. Fire truck maintenance is going to be short, I think there's $1,500 left in that account at this point in time. And it depends on the direction the Select Board would like to give, because we've talked about two of the fire apparatus tires. They're about, it's like $3,800 per apparatus, so do you want to do them both in one year, or do you want to split them up? I think we should at least do one, at least one this fiscal year, so that's why I'm kind of suggesting a, a transfer of $4,000 from fire wages, which at least at this point in time is under the percentage that we are currently at. Ambulance billing is currently at, I think, 45 or 46% being spent through the end of October, so I'm suggesting that $4,000 either through appropriation, which I would suggest come from- from ambulance fees reserved for appropriation, or transfer from another account. And then, ambulance maintenance, as I look at it, is probably going to be short this particular year. You don't see it in that report, but we just, the chief just had to do $3,900 worth of repair to ambulance one. So, I'm suggesting a consideration for whether it be, again, appropriation from ambulance fees reserved for appropriation, or a transfer for 3,900 bucks into that particular.
How much was for the tires, Ed? I missed that.
It's $3,800 per apparatus, and we're looking at doing two of those.
Only the engines?
Yes.
Not the bumper truck?
Right, correct.
So, I get, I guess I have a hard time asking to move money out of wages. After what we just went through in the last budget cycle and the override to get the staffing up there.
That's going to be my question.
I guess that would be my question as a citizen. It's like, you said you needed this extra $360,000 to staff it. Are you not staffed? Because how else are you, you know, for the public, you know, sitting in the audience, how else do you have available money in this line item?
I mean, is there anywhere else we can take it from, rather than wages? I guess that's the question for the, for the tires.
Or, are, are we staffing 100%? And it was just a miscalculation? But, the questions, I would think the question's going to get asked, right? So, I don't know if the better course is to take 38, hold on, it's, sorry, is to take 3,800 out of the fire EMS admin aid. And the, and the logic being right now, we haven't filled that position. So, therefore, that's why there's money available in there.
But we're about, about to, that PRF has been approved for posting.
Yeah.
But either, either way, that's, there's not enough.
And it's going forward as a.
Full-time, so there's not enough money in that position anyways.
Well, I, I mean.
Or depending on how we allocate ours.
You've got.
We've only got six months.
Two fundings of the, the fire piece, the police piece for the shared admin, and then the balance was going to be filled in by dispatcher wages.
Correct, which then tells me it's a 75% PD employee, 25% fire employee. If you just look at where the dollars are coming from.
And see, I, I, I look at it, and I just see those dollar signs of those fire EMS individuals that are making $28 or $30 an hour doing admin stuff, so. In my mind, I think about getting as much of that back into an admin position as possible. But, again, but again, it's, I'm just, I'm just trying to frame the, frame the conversation here. You know, I, I, I think the select board, from everything we've talked about, would want to put a set of tires on there. I mean, from there, it's, I, I threw that out there because as, as I see it, and that can change with the number of fires, but here's, here's what I think we should do, if we use another different account or whatever, fine. But I, I'm just trying to get us to the endpoint.
Yeah, is there, I know during Kate's presentation, she mentioned something about free cash. Is this, is that a possibility to take, buy the tires out of free cash?
I would say, and that'll come up later, I, I would say, the, I won't say it's not possible, I will say the probability of that is about equivalent to me going in and, you know, to MGM and putting down like $1,000 and walking away with about $5 million.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to look for something else besides wages.
I know. Are we going to have free cash certified for this meeting? Are we going to be able to, because I don't see the vote. I don't see the vote to replenish the stabilization account.
It's, it's on there, but like I say, we have another agenda item to talk about year end close.
Okay, so.
But we can bring it up now, and, and from.
Well, I guess the short, the, the simple question I'd like answered, do you anticipate free cash being certified in time to act upon it at the special town meeting?
Do I anticipate it? No, I expect, I, I don't expect that the book, everything to be done to close the books, including the last pieces of, they might finish the receivables in the next couple of days, but then Bradley has to do all, all the work on the, the reports for DOR and what have you. Would I be very pleasantly surprised if it was done and ready? Yes. But if, like I say, probability-wise, I don't think it's a strong probability.
Okay, all right, so keeping on, moving on here. So, we've got fire truck maintenance. I think we're agreed that we would definitely want to go for tires, at least for one truck, if not for two. The question is, is that the only possibility of where we can find the money from? So, that might come back to us, with some further.
So, just on that one point, if, if you back out all the, all the things that the capital committee recommended, is there sufficient funds to cover? Like, we're adding, we're pulling $17,000 out for this truck.
Oh, and, and the $6,500 for the stained ceiling tiles, and all, yes, there is.
Right, because there was like $42,000 or $43,000?
For capital?
It actually ended up more than, I think it actually ended up 80-something.
So, why not, you know, why not just?
Maybe they come out of capital.
And do both, and do, get all the tires done at the same time? Because you probably can't go to capital unless you're over 5,000.
You're correct. However, the other thing is, I, I will tell you straight out, if I was sitting on the capital committee, I would say that is not a capital expense.
I know, but aren't we allowed to override capital committee? Speaking as a capital committee member. I mean, we override PPP all the time, so.
Well, you could, number one. But number two is, you'd be taking it from capital stabilization, which is a 2/3 majority vote. So, if you have the, if the discussion comes up on town meeting floor that, is this or is this not really a capital expense? And capital maybe came, comes out and says, "Well, we didn't vote for it, the select board did," are you going to get the 2/3 majority?
Right, well, it's safety, life, and I think, I don't think it should pull, come from wages, so.
Okay, so I think I would, I would go for the idea, and personally, of tires for both vehicles, fire trucks, not including the tanker over at Blumer Road there, but our main fire trucks, but see if we can't find it from somewhere else besides fire wages, given the override.
I have to write the final warrant for next Tuesday's meeting. I'm looking for some direction tonight.
We just gave you a Tuesday.
We've been trying different things. I mean, what else is out there?
You're shooting down everything. Give us a yes somewhere, man.
I want to hear where you want to take it from.
Remember, we're the volunteers, you're the one who gets paid. Give us a yes somewhere. I did.
Why don't I play devil's advocate? Why are we so?
We've used the reserve fund.
Call for wages, why?
Because we argued for an override at the last town meeting, and the override was for the fire department wages.
Right.
So.
So, why are we going to tell, we've got people to vote for that?
And there were reasons why that couldn't be fulfilled.
Well, no, but, but it is perhaps, perhaps we, because.
Were they for fire department wages, or were they just for EMS wages?
It was a general override to provide round-the-clock coverage of fire and EMS to the community. It was very broad.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, and it got supported. So, if we're going to take it from wages, then somebody other than me, or a select board member, and it's got to be Chief Fazoli, because he's there, is going to have to get up there, and when that question gets posed, he's going to have to have an answer. And hopefully, the answer is, yes, we are fully staffed. And fortunately, we've got newer people in at a lower rate, and therefore, I'm confident this money's available, and I'm not going to be asking for more money at the end of the year, and I'm not going to be announcing brownouts. If that's the answer he's going to give, then I support pulling it from wages. My own two cents, but I'm only one vote.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Steven, ever?
It's also the fire, for interim fire chief should be involved in that conversation.
Can we move on, or do you want a more definitive?
I'll just scratch that particular transfer.
Now, that's not the spirit.
I think it's important to do. I mean, I, I don't disagree with the need for it.
I personally think you should have a one, if you haven't already had it, you need to have a one-off conversation with Fire Chief Fazoli.
And if this.
And see what. The elected officials, I think you should take the heat and make the decision tonight.
Assuming he can, he, he concurs with what we're saying, and he's ready to articulate that as the department head.
I will do that.
That's fine.
I will do that.
Then I would support it.
Okay, moving on, all right. Health department, interdepartmental transfers.
Interdepartmental transfers.
I'm just, hold on.
All right.
Back up on ambulance billing and ambulance maintenance. When you're saying appropriation or transfer, are you thinking transfer from ambulance receipts for those two particular items?
I was, I was thinking, while not transfer, I was thinking appropriation from.
From ambulance fees.
Okay, I just want to make.
Absolutely, yeah, that was, that was actually my first choice.
All right.
And that, then that goes back to the same thing you were just making the point with me on, is that all of the other accounts were basically through the, the override.
Yep.
Okay, health department, interdepartmental transfers, transfer between $5,000 and $6,195.94 from the health agent wages to the Board of Health contracted expenses. Depends on how the select board feels about either wiping that account out at this point in time, or leaving a little bit of money in there. And in addition to that, we'll also need $14,000 from somewhere else transferred, or their ARPA appropriation approved.
So, on the first item, I'd say it's been two years. We're trying to pay somebody less than $20 an hour for 11 hours of work per pay cycle, which is five and a half hours a week, while we have a contractor charging $60, okay? But basically, doing, doing 10 to 20 hours a week, which is like 20 to 40 a pay cycle, it's little wonder why we can't fill this job. You know, and then it's not lost on me that one of the, one of the examples given is why the incumbent in this position left, is because they were doing so many more hours. It, it just wasn't worth it to them, and there was never going to be an adjustment, one way or the other. Is, I go back to, we can continue to put this one-time money in here, but we're not solving the problem, and it's going to be two years now, and we don't have a solution lined up. You know, if we have a solution lined up for July 1st, or something to think about, okay, maybe, but at what point are we going to have to say, we just need, it's like the street sweeper, we just need to stop pouring money into this and let the chips fall and move on. There's got to be another alternative, and, you know, I don't know what the solution is. I do, I believe Caitlin, I, I think the health, the board has done the best they can. They've tried all eight sources, but it's just, they need help, and we got to figure out a way to restructure this, because we, there's no more ARPA money. And we, and we, we just can't continue with the expectation that some miracle worker's going to come out at 11 hours a pay cycle.
Yeah.
Okay, I, this one, I can give you a transfer amount from if you wanted to do it somewhere else, other than ARPA.
There's septic fees? It's at $58,000?
Well, I, I think that, no, but I think that's one of the conversations, again, for the next budget cycle, is where are there fees? And now that we know that at least while we're contracting for them, we have to pay for those, is where can they go and still, still be not outrageous to the surrounding communities, but help support this?
But right now, if I was understanding what Caitlin was saying, the, the fees that we're receiving in through the Board of Health, right, the inspection fees and the tobacco fee and whatever she was mentioning, that all comes back into general fund, yet they've been struggling trying to figure out if those fees can start to cover the health agent wages, right? But right now, they don't, it's not like an enterprise fund. They don't come back to that line item in the budget, it goes back to the general fund.
Right.
They earn it for the town, but it gets spent on anything we need it for, essentially, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, that's, that's part of the conundrum, is that they're bringing in money from the Board of Health, but it's.
Right, but there was a point in time where it was, there was, and this is beyond the health department, this is including electrical inspections, our building commissioner, where they were, they were all coming off the fees. And then it's like, well, these fees are so high, let's print them on salary and bring them over there. And that happened within the Board of Health, and then they had an admin, and then they decided at some point in time down in back history, that, well, you know what? If we decided if we, we had a shared admin, and we don't, the person left or isn't there, let's, let's, we'll both take on those responsibilities and increase the wages and that. But you get to this point where now you only got one person in that office, and who's spending more time, even tonight, we heard, on administrative work? Where it's, it's, it shouldn't be the highest-paid employee doing the minimalist job. It should be the other way around.
Correct.
And I don't, I don't know how, how we rectify that or fix that, but you can have a revolving, and I sent it all to you guys, and I sent it to Caitlin tonight, so it's in your inbox. But in 2018, the Mass Legislature changed the caps in the law on departmental revolving funds, which is where this would fall under. So, it's an unlimited cap, but the select board has to approve the number every year. Probably similar to how we do it at town meeting.
Yeah, we do.
When we put the number.
For other revolving funds, we approve them at town meeting.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay.
But, but that's just going to take money away. I mean, it's, it's one way or the other. Either, either we come up with the money to pay for this, and we use their $40,000, which we're already using in that department, because what they're raising in fees is not enough to fill that whole budget.
Correct.
Right? So, it's, it's coming out of one pocket or the other.
But right now.
I figured out that in a 12-month timeframe, we've paid the contractor about $35,000.
Yeah, right, so do we look at making this a $40,000 a year benefited job?
Well, for the, for the next budget cycle, certainly a discussion item that I'm sure will take us many monies, many meetings.
But I go back to, I, I don't know that I consciously can support something without having a plan in place or something to go, because this will be the, I understand it, but this, this will be the fourth time for more money. And if we had every department head in here looking for more money every time versus maybe rethinking how everything should be done, I, I don't know, there's got to be some, no one's offering a solution here.
No, I mean, and you look at the sheet that Caitlin passed out in terms of what you have to do, who you have to be to qualify for training to be a health inspector. I mean, you don't find too many of those that a diamond doesn't either to, to want to do that. I mean, it sounds like every town is having the same issue, so it's not even a matter of trying to regionalize with another town and share somebody. I mean, that's, that option.
Right, so we go back to looking at the cities. Look at, look at, you know, we got Northampton, you got Hoyokan, you got Westfield. What are they doing? Who are, would their, would their, just like we do with our, I think, our plumbing inspector, or one of our inspectors is a full-time Hoyokan electric employee, does all inspections off-hours. Okay, well, that seems to work, so can't we do the same thing with that? If you, if you want to build in, in Southampton, you want a septic install, here's when we're available. These are our hours, this is our rate. If you don't, go build in another community, because currently, we're not keeping up with everybody anyways. We could kind of slow the inflow.
Well, at this point in time, we have to figure out what we would want to do here. We have $6,195 in the health agent wages.
I'm okay with that one.
That we had put in there to reserve that. It doesn't seem like we're going to find a person between now and June.
So, then, at that point, I'd say, transfer the $6,195.94, all of it.
I think so.
And, and then, that would basically drop the need for the $14,000 down by $1,195.94.
But didn't, well.
Well, I thought $6,195 was only going to get them to mid-December, and then the 14 was for the next six months.
Don't they have enough right now in the, in the ARPA money we gave them? Don't they have enough to get through almost mid-December? Isn't that what you said? And then this would pick up beyond December? I don't think this.
I'm talking, talking with Bradley today, what was in there, I ba, I basically calculated it out that they had an eight-month need for $3,000. And then subtracted out what the balance is, well, the, the transfer amount and the balance in there, so I, that's how I got to the needing $14,000.
Okay, because the ARPA request that just came in, so it's either this and/or ARPA, the ARPA request was $24,000, so that makes sense, since you're eight-month. the ARPA request was $24,000, so that makes sense since you're an eight-month figure, I guess. That's what their request was for them, I guess it would be for.
They did go, they did request 24, they did get on the finance agenda.
Uh huh.
And asked for them to support a $24,000 withdrawal for free cash.
Oh.
Finance committee opted to take no action on it because they don't have the free cash certified yet and that generally that would come from a, through the warrant process and the department head wouldn't, the department wouldn't go directly to finance.
Right.
Before that.
I see, okay. Um, okay, so, so we probably, so it's somewhere around a $20,000 need, is that right? Is that what we're saying, total, from what you're thinking here?
Yeah, I came up with 24 and, yeah, but, yeah.
All right, so if we take all of this, I mean, I don't, I don't.
If, if you took all the $61,9594 out, it would leave with my calculation a, a need for another $12,804.06, which I'd probably just round to $12,800.
And where, where do you suggest that come from?
Yeah, we've only got a.
Other than ARPA as a transfer?
Yeah.
Health insurance.
We certainly don't have that much in ARPA right now. I mean, until some of these projects spend down and finish, um, we don't have that.
Did you run the, um, I'm assuming because you're recommending that, you ran, you guys ran the calculations?
I asked Jennifer to look at it, yes, and run the calculations.
And she supports that, or that number, whether or not.
Yeah.
To actually draw from is a different story, but, okay.
So there's money available in the health insurance fund is what you're saying to pick that back?
Yeah, we can't hire anybody in the highway department. Right, we've got them all covered for health insurance.
Yeah.
It's a platinum health insurance.
This money is having open positions?
Yep, it's a platinum health insurance position.
I mean, we might have, you know, in hand, I'd, I'd guess if, if Ed and Bradley would agree with my figures, we might have around at most 4,500 available in monies that.
We have to wait till the reimbursements come back.
Huh?
Right, we're waiting for the reimbursements to come back.
Yeah, a lot of that is.
And we can't pledge that.
There is, and, and there's a whole lot, I mean, there's a lot encumbered because we did those couple of years for the school tours, I mean, that's a huge chunk of money that's out, no, but I mean, there's money tied up, right? And so there's very few projects that are finishing and the few that are, you know, maybe we've got, you know, dribs and drabs of money left from that and not more than 4,500 I would say right now that's relatively sure. I think there will be some more, but not, not immediately for town meeting, I don't think, so we might pull a few bucks out of, out of ARPA, but not, not enough to cover what you need here.
All right, so net to $12,000 funding source, employee health insurance.
12,8, yeah.
What, 12,8?
Yeah.
You want to just round to 13? 12,8?
Yep.
So moved.
Health insurance.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Robert.
There are two bylaws to be considered, uh, what is it?
Membership in committees.
It's not the unregistered vehicles.
No, membership in committees and conducting business as committees. And those are already looked at, or they're with KP Law, yeah.
Yeah, KP Law has.
Yeah, they came to us at one point in time. Yeah, we don't have any more that we're going to put in this time.
Yep. Uh, free cash distribution in case we get lucky.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm suggesting if the select board agrees with me to put the opioid stabilization fund, uh, onto this special town meeting warrant for approval. There were two, uh, capital requests voted by the capital committee, one is the additional $17,339 and.
Ed, can you hold on one second on the opioid stabilization fund? Can we just make sure, I know we're going to, but that got derailed because, um, finance committee spoke against, or one member of finance committee spoke against it.
Yep.
So I don't want to repeat the same thing and, um, I'm sure finance committees, finance committee is going to have enough time to meet and weigh in on these.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
The, and the amount just for.
Yeah, supposedly that person spoke on this because DOR was supposed to come out with some other kind of alternative instead. They have not as of yet.
They have not. Yeah, and other towns have definitely created their stabilization.
No, I'm good with it, I just, again, one voice.
Yeah, and for the.
Shot it down and.
For the record, I think what we have in there, unless it's more than one year, but I think we've got, we signed under more than one opioid settlement and I don't think we've started to see all of it yet, but right now, when I last looked, we had about $34,000 in there.
No, that's, it's, it's good we don't have it all because we don't know how to spend it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it'd be good to siphon that off and put it in a stabilization account.
You can't have it.
Yeah. Okay, so back on the vehicle now, this is.
Keeping the needles?
Is, is this a different vehicle or same?
This is, well, we had talked about it earlier because the highway superintendent wanted to make sure I didn't miss it and had it in there as a free ca, uh, cash transfer, so.
Your $17,000.
Your $17.
The, the.
You're good.
The capital voted to recommend two, uh, capital requests from capital stabilization, one being $17,339.70 for the highway department F350 truck that already has, I think it's $44,000 allocated to it from the May 2021, uh, town meeting and this would close the gap, so it could actually get ordered and we could replace one of our defunct vehicles. The other capital crest they wanted to bring forward was, uh, from, also from the stabilization fund, the Norris Elementary School, replacing the water-stained ceiling tiles for $6,500.
And where is this in the school? Where, what's?
It's, so we fixed this, we fixed the roofs, so there's no more leaks, so now the next step is to replace the tiles so that nobody thinks there are leaks.
Yeah, it was, it was the next project.
Line.
Uh, that would have been on the list.
From which?
From the, well, went, went forward to the May annual town meeting.
Okay.
Uh, transfer $6,000 from health insurance to the unemployment expense as we do have one employee that was not renewed, uh, that we are paying benefits on. Assessors have requested a transfer of $36,000 from the assessor consultants to the principal assessor wages, that sum would cover it, uh, the, uh, principal assessor wages for the entire year and would also cover what I believe was $7,000 or $7,500 that was allocated from ARPA.
Seven.
Uh, so that that money could be replenished.
Yep.
So this would cover through, from like December to June or something like that?
Right, and free up the ARPA money.
Well, no, actually this would cover the entire fiscal year.
Oh.
So it's basically, that $7,000 is incorporated in here.
Oh, I see, I see.
So it can be transferred back to ARPA.
Oh.
Uh, I am requesting that we put an article on here regarding the, our current strong fire chief statute. And then, um, as John was speaking about earlier, I got another assignment, um, queeze to me last week of, um, helping the Norris Elementary School procure a replacement 7D transportation van. Uh, the reason we would need a article on the special town meeting warrant is if we, at the school committee's discretion, I don't believe they want to pay for this all in one sum as an appropriation, that means we would either need to borrow for it or, or lease, uh, which I think they want to own it at the end, so it would probably be a borrowing, uh, which will require, which would require a, a town meeting vote.
There might be grant money after too. I mean, I think, I, I, one of the things we might have to think about on vehicles, on stuff I've been reading anyway, is that the state is pushing more and more at least hybrid vehicles, if not moving toward electric vehicles, when you're starting to get new fleet vehicles that are.
Yeah.
Appropriate vehicles, not probably your highway truck, but other vehicles like this. So, so having said that, there may be grant money too that could be looked at, I don't know.
Yeah, so our, our thought here is that this, this vehicle is 100% paid by the preschool revolving account, right? So there's no tax, no tax, general tax collection money in there. So there, there's fun and, and we've gotten to the size now, this goes back to our earlier, the schools committees request earlier for some feasibility money to either expand the current footprint by knocking down the old section and adding a second floor and/or just completely eliminating the current Norris building and building a brand-new school somewhere. Obviously, an expansion would be less effective, or less costly, right? But in this particular issue, our preschool is going up and the school committee, while we're not obligated to provide preschool coverage, we see the value in it and doing it and getting the children early and intervention and getting them in the system and, you know, we can, we can show the analytical and the data where the, the, the education starts in much sooner, right? And, and advances, so for all the right reasons, we'll want to continue the preschool program. Uh, the problem with our vehicle is we've been kicking, you know, to the highway superintendent's point of view and maybe he can take a page out of their book. We've been kicking the can down the road for so long that we're now at the point where the Department of Motor Vehicles has refused to renew the safety inspection on the vehicle.
How old is the vehicle?
Uh, it's, it's only like 10 years old, so it's not that ancient, but the driver's side panel is all, it's all rusted, uh, which, which is common for that particular Dodge. Um, so the, when we got it inspected last year, this is the last time you're not getting inspected. And of course, now we're two weeks out from it, so it's, it's an emergency. But our plan is to purchase one van, perhaps a commercial agreement for five years, pay for it out of the revolving account at maybe $15,000 a year, right? So you're talking about 50, $75,000, $65,000. By the time you put it in, we have to put in, um, new code requires, uh, fixed car seats because it's a preschool vehicle, put the warning lights and all that stuff on it. Um, and then in year six, when that's paid off, purchase a second one. So every five years, we'll be putting a new vehicle in and at $15,000 a year, give or take, the revolving account will be able to absorb that, handle that. And then we'll get to the point where right now, we only provide, um, services for preschool children on identified IEPs, not what they, what the opposite is called typicals. So getting the second vehicle will allow us to do the typicals as well, which then you're allowed to charge for that. We can't charge for, for kids on IEPs. So we think, this is the long run and how we go, but.
And the ownership of it right now is, sorry?
I'm sorry?
The ownership of the vehicle right now is.
Town of Southampton.
Is the town, okay.
Norris is a department of the town.
Yes, it is.
Hampshire Regional is a foreign dictionary.
Yeah.
But, um, but yes, and then as I said earlier, there is a, Hampshire Regional has a few vans, one of them, just because of the way it is, is sitting idle and will not be anticipated to be used until the spring and that's more used for after-school sports and activities. So we have a window of time to use this, to use that vehicle, so it's not like two weeks preschool stops.
And that was the best news that anyone could have brought me tonight, James, so I owe you.
Well, I will say our, our high school principal was adamant to say, I don't have a spare, just sitting here, it's just, this is a window of time, it's not used.
Do we have an idea just off the top of your head on costing, what a, what a van costs?
I think $55, $60,000. As it's outfitted.
Well, I, I would think with the special safety features and everything else, we're probably up in that $65,000 range, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, it does carry a radio as well, I mean, a, a two-way radio to talk to Norris, not an AM FM.
Yeah. And, and, and I will send a shout-out to LPVEC because I reached out to them today going, we got to develop a spec on this thing. I'll bet you they bid, bid them all the time and they were willing to share their spec that they had just used.
Great. Okay, well, we got a lot of stuff on a special town warrant. So the idea, guys, we.
I love et cetera.
Yeah, I know, et cetera is a little worrisome.
I had, I had thrown that on the actual agenda because of the fact that, uh, they did, they didn't close until yesterday at four o'clock, so I knew there would be stuff that I hadn't had on the agenda that would come forward and, and basically I just cut and pasted and then added and I left the et cetera at the end.
Yeah, so the list that you put in, out separately is more inclusive than what you have on the actual agenda.
On the agenda, correct.
And remember, we need to, Randall let us withdraw one, so we've, we've cut down two minutes of the meeting already.
Yeah, okay.
Well, actually technically there was two because one of his was redundant to a capital request.
That's right.
There you go.
So, and we are meeting again on next Tuesday, the 14th.
Next Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
Only to focus.
Live here in this room.
Only to focus on the warrant.
Well, actually I posted, I think I posted it for this room, we could meet upstairs too.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just for this warrant and the signing of this warrant.
Okay. Okay, all right, let's keep on moving on the agenda, that's it for the term warrant? All right, it may be midnight soon here. Um, okay.
Hey, Robert.
Night. Senior Center, Senior Center building update.
Good night, Randall.
And next steps. Night, Rena. We'll be here in the morning.
[laughing].
No, we'll try not to be. Okay, Ed, want to take a senior center update, um, on the building issue there, anything?
Well, as we know that the, uh, historical, Southampton Historical Society withdrew their objection, uh, to, uh, the award of the Parsons Well to the town of Southampton, so we expect that that will shorten its time in court for award, but, um, you know, this is on here, uh, just to keep everybody's mind fresh, um, we do, the select board did approve a building committee charge for this. I actually have received one application.
Okay.
Uh, for that, um, but just to keep everybody's mind fresh, acquisition of land is a, will be a town meeting vote. The town cannot pay more than an established appraisal, assessment, what have you for property. The current asking price for the property that the senior center feasibility committee has identified as the number one choice, the purchase price being asked exceeds the assessed value. So what that basically means is we'll end up going into some type of negotiations. In general, that means an appraisal, probably an appraisal done by the property owner, probably an appraisal done by someone that the town has contracted with, um, depending on where those two appraisals sit, if they agree, it's great, we've got, you know, we've got an established amount. If they're still far apart, the, the third part of that is the third appraisal, which is done and, um, someone that, uh, it's, the cost is split between the property owner and, uh, the town and the appraisal company that does it is someone to have agreed to. Um, you know, assuming that, and that all has to happen before it gets put into some type of annual town meeting warrant article or a special town meeting warrant article to be brought forward.
Right.
Uh, and any acquisition, since we're also doing something similar for the Public Safety Building Committee, any acquisition of land is, even if you're buying it rather than borrowing it forward, is a two-thirds majority vote at town meeting.
Both of them would be?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay. Um, so at this point in time, we, we do have the committee charge, as you said, I believe in the charge we said that the committee could, once they get their members before us and we actually appoint members to the committee, they can actually start meeting as soon as they want to, but we, if I'm hearing you right, we, we're still having to wait for the final clearance from the court?
Yes.
To do anything else, to even start an appraisal or anything or?
Right, because we need a, you know.
We don't have any money.
We need, yeah, we need, we need.
Well, we'd have the money from.
Yeah, we need, we need a funding source. I mean, it's, it's, at some point in time, the individual select board member at the opposite end of the table. I mean, it's, it's, at some point in time, the individual select board member at the opposite end of the table will see that, you know, I, we've already semi, well, we have deficit spent because the legal fees to, uh, support us in court are charged to an account for, uh, the funds that will come in from that.
From the will eventually.
Yeah, so, uh, but yeah, uh, you know, theoretically, the funds would come in from the will, which would allow us to, uh, move forward with appraisals and have money to actually acquire the property as a first step.
Okay, so we're still kind of waiting on that one then, okay? So maybe, certainly not this town meeting, okay, moving forward. All right, and then public safety one, why don't you go ahead since you were heading in that direction in terms of the update?
Oh, uh, public safety committee met on Monday. We're in a bit of a conundrum of, I'll call chicken and egg. Uh, the two, the two properties that the committee has come down to are Zero College, or no. Well, Zero College Highway, which is the property across from, uh, Dowd Insurance and Parker and Agradie and, uh, 204 College Highway, which is the existing, uh, fire station. So, um, we realize, and the committee has authorized and the select board authorized, Christine Falls and myself to meet with the Labries and negotiate, uh, on Zero College Highway. That's going to take a little bit of time. We realize that. Our contract will probably end up needing to be extended, uh, with HKT Architects. And are there some other things that maybe need, need to be adjusted in there? But we know our, our timelines are shifted a little bit. Uh, I will let the select board know that, uh, Chris and I have a meeting with Jim and Eugene Labrie this Thursday at two thirty to start those negotiations, you know? Well, you know, what, what, what specifically are, are the specifics of the four-point, approximate four-point-two acres they may donate, you know, to the town? And what are the terms and conditions that go along with that? We are also interested at this point in time in, uh, negotiating to see if we can purchase the front right commercial lot to go along with it so that we would have a direct access to, um, the public safety facility. You know, some, some of the complications are, that would make it much easier to get out onto Route 10. But also at this point in time, we don't know when or if the proposed development, presidential development or commercial development might go forward. So if, I mean, just theoretically saying if we went forward just on the land donation and that didn't go forward or it didn't go forward for, you know, five years, we would not have a right of way to, that, that, that four-point-two acres would be landlocked.
We wouldn't have a buildable lot.
Right, exactly, you know, exactly.
Buying a landlocked parcel, so.
Right.
That's the challenge.
Yeah, so that, that's where we are with that.
So hopefully things will move along there, but we may end up having to also time extend the contract with HKT, as Ed said.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Any questions, anybody? Okay, we'll keep on moving here. Uh, hazard mitigation plan update quotes, um, this is something we went through last meeting. Um, we had three quote proposals slash quotes, requests for quotes that came in. Um, and I, I will take the responsibility here. Uh, we had three, three folks that came in on it, Ty and Bond, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and, uh, Jamie Kaplan Associates? Kaplan Associates?
Yeah.
Um, and from a.
CPA firm?
No.
No, uh, no.
It's spelled differently.
They do hazard mitigation plans for many, many towns. They're based out of Northampton, I believe. Anyway, um, as I read it, I, I really liked the proposal of the Kaplan Associates. And I was concerned that the timeframe that PVPC had put in, they were the lowest bidder or the lowest quoter, not a bidder, they were the one that provided the lowest quote. But I was concerned that their timeframe was off with the end of the grant period that we had been worried on. Because when we were putting the grant together, it was a two-year estimate. But the contract ended up, ended up being a three-year contract from the state. So I withdraw my objections and I guess the winning entity, based on the lowest quote that came in to carry out the hazard mitigation plan update is actually Pioneer Valley Planning.
Are we obligated to take the lowest? Oh, well then, we have no choice.
We have no choice.
It was, it was.
But I just caution you, you get what you pay for.
It was, it was done as quotes and that, and that as a request for proposals.
Yeah, we didn't do a request for proposal on, but yeah, um, the other one did provide much more of a proposal, which was quite impressive, but anyway. But yes, we got a, a request for quotes and it's for the update and so we have no, no, um, I mean, that's our choice. So, uh, could we have a motion to accept Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to be our selected entity to help us do the hazard mitigation plan update?
I move that we accept the quote from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for the hazard mitigation plan update.
Okay, Stephen in the second?
Aye.
Dan?
Second discussion.
Yes.
I'm assuming Dan second.
Uh, Dan second, yeah.
Yeah, under discussion, do, do we need to authorize a signer? To, to sign the contract or no?
Uh, just on the contract?
Uh, it's like.
As part, as part of this vote?
It, it's twenty-eight thousand, which usually in that, it's not until fifty thousand dollars that the, uh, select board actually signs it, so I usually sign them, so. Whether you make that part of the motion or not, it's up to, up to you.
As long as you don't come back asking for it later.
I won't.
Right, because you won't be here.
So I did have an informational question. Who on staff is the point of contact? If we're not totally sanguine about the quality of the staffing on this project, can we be more assertive on our side? Who is the point of contact for this?
It'll end up being the chair of the Hazard Mitigation Update Committee.
Oh, no, a volunteer?
No, a lot of the, no, the committee, um, as we put the proposal together for the grant, no, we had to select town officials. So various heads of departments, so the fire chief is involved, um, highway department, uh.
It's shorter to list the department heads that aren't on it.
Oh, gosh, okay, okay.
Yeah, no.
I got too much information.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, yeah, there's a, there's a committee and there will be a few at-large members, I think, that can come from, from the general population, but it's mostly, um, town officials that are involved in it. Okay, I think we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, dispatch regional MOU, any updates?
We do not have an official draft MOU from East Hampton, but, uh, Chris, you and I were assigned to, uh, actually negotiate that. So I do have something unofficial to share with you.
Okay, all right.
Have you seen it? Have you seen it?
Officially unofficial, okay, very good, all right.
Not for the public record, apparently.
Apparently not yet.
Chris, we trust you.
Okay, well, thanks.
Edward, I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't believe you there, John.
Okay.
Let's see what you got to say about this one.
All right, yeah, classification compensation. Go ahead.
December of what year?
December twenty-twenty-three.
All right.
December of twenty-twenty-three?
You, you heard it here, you heard it here.
Mark it down.
How are the interviews going? I mean, do you have a sense of how many people are taking advantage of this and doing it?
Uh, I think after, there weren't many that actually signed, were signed up this week, but I don't think we have many to go. I will actually have to sit down with Judy and look at the specific individuals that have not chosen to this point in, in time.
Because I think at one point, didn't they talk about not just individuals, but sometimes they were, they were going to do maybe an office or a department or?
Yeah, and, and in some cases, if you have like, um, multiple employees doing the same job or whatever, they would do it with the.
They were going to do some mini-grouping if they.
Right, and with the job descriptions, they will go back to the, uh, actual department heads.
So I, I guess one of the things I'd, I'd want to, um, caution us on is, you know, repeating the sins of the past, right? The definition of insanity. So this nineteen-seventy valuation we have, and then we did a whole job description. A lot of times the, the pushback that comes from certain individual or the standard response is, I never had any input into that. I never got to say, this is job description. So I guess for those that do not comply or partake, um, I would request that their appointing authorities be made aware of it at some point in time.
Yeah.
And that, um, in the event that this body is not the appointing authority, but we are the ones paying the bill, that we also be notified. And perhaps leverage could be brought to bear.
And then, in fact, they, they supplied a template which has categories checked off for whether they've, uh, got the job description, uh, received a questionnaire back from that particular individual or, or department head. Uh, we could probably modify that to take it out another step and say, individuals contacted and did a, uh, the follow-up interview.
Yeah.
And then we can probably actually even take it out one step further and, uh, put another column where, you know, the department head or board or committee chair was, you know, contacted regarding, you know, input on.
Yeah, I mean, this is a huge project that we're doing.
It is, yeah.
And, and it's going to have ramifications.
And we aren't going to do it again right away, so we may as well do it.
We have to have buy-in across.
Yeah.
The board and we can't have, it's going to impact every single employee here, here in town. So it, it needs to get done.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the more we can do to sort of build that out in terms of a checklist or whatever, I think that would be important for documentation sake, if nothing else.
Would you want something that said people abstain from participating in the survey?
I mean, that could be one of the responses, I suppose, if they.
Yeah, which I'm fine with. I just, as, again, right now, chairing PPP, I'd like to know who those people are. So if and when they ever appear before the body and be like, well, you had the chance, you, you abstained from it, okay.
Okay, yeah.
We're moving on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right, good. Uh, fire chief job profile duties and search.
Posting is in your packet, the, um, narrative or statement is in your packet. It was posted last week on MAIA or MAI or?
MMA?
Yeah.
What for one, yeah.
Yeah, that's the only place I, I put it on. And then I know it's here posted in town hall.
And it's on the website.
It's on the website.
It's on the website.
Under the jobs section.
Yep, and then, uh, although I did notice that it's the first one and it's bold for the title and the very next job is town administrator and it's not bold. So we're not, we're not consistent on there, or I didn't know.
They're all, they're all bolded.
No, look, I'm telling you, look.
It might be a different font.
Yeah, it could be a different font.
I haven't figured out yet.
When I, when I saw that, I'm like, oh, he's trying to hide that. He doesn't want anybody to apply for town administrator. I see where this is going.
And, and we did modify the title on this one a little bit, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, it's, the title is now fully fire chief, uh, slash emergency, director of emergency medical services.
Medical services, not emergency management, medical services, EMS. Okay, good, so that's out there. And then is there another broader way? I mean, we're, was the committee, have you finalized the committee itself or?
So we have under old business, fire chief search committee. I mean, we can take it up now and skip it and get down there. So we have the three people that are on there, you know, I think we need to move forward. We should do an active call for applications, um, to try and, and get two other people to appoint it. I'm envisioning, I, I will take responsibility and write up a draft charge between and get it circulated before the next, the twenty-first. Or maybe, maybe if I get done quickly, maybe we can sneak it in the fourteenth, just the charge itself.
Yeah.
But what I'm envisioning is the charge, right now, all applications are coming to my, to my town email address to be held. And then if you look at the, under the posting of minimum knowledge, skills and abilities, the bullet points, I basically built out a matrix from there. You know, do you meet, do you not meet, do you exceed, weigh the points to it? I would see the committee getting together after, we, in the posting, we're going to leave it up for fourteen business days or fourteen calendar days before we'll take any action. So that puts us the Monday after Thanksgiving or of Thanksgiving or something. So we're not, we're not just going to act on the first half, okay? I'm not going to call this committee to meet every single time. So hopefully at day fifteen, we've got four or five.
Right.
The committee will come together, I'll open the emails right there in front of them. So I'm not going to look at them ahead of time. And, um, print them all out, we'll each individually score them, come up with a ranking, and then the committee will solicit a assessment center, right? Once we come up with our final group, push them through the assessment center and the assessment center will come back with a final recommendation for the select board.
My only concern is that two weeks doesn't sound like long enough for people to apply.
It'll be open after that, but we're not going to act, we're not going to do anything for the first fourteen days.
Okay.
Right, it's a period, it's a window of time to open, but then we'll start, then we reserve the right to start the process.
So then you can, okay, so there might be another meeting with another group of applicants after, I see, okay. And where are we finding the money for the assessment center?
Well, there's seventy-five hundred dollars left in the fifteen thousand dollars in the budget.
Correct, okay.
Hopefully it comes in under that.
Yep, okay, good. All right, so the word is.
Unless something didn't get booked, oh, no, don't you even, no.
Tires.
Buying tires.
Oh.
Buying tires. Are we going back to this?
That's, that's enough money for the tires.
Then let's go one week without a town administrator, madam chair, and you can be acting town administrator so I have money for this assessment center. Your call.
Yikes, all right.
At any point in time, if our acting fire chief decides to give it up, you're a charge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chief.
I could be wrong, my memory fails me daily. But, uh, I thought we had approved a continuing contract with the fire chief who did the assessment of the.
It's a temporary, temporary approval.
No.
To December thirty-first and or when a fire chief is hired.
Yeah, but no, you're.
To do the assessment for us.
Yeah, the assessments that are different.
The same fellow who had deep knowledge of the facilities now to help with the assessment.
We, we have not signed anything or integrated anything because we wanted to do a, there's two or three firms, seize one.
Okay.
And get pricing amongst them.
I, I think what Stephen's thinking of is the approval of Chief Anderson to do the grant.
Thank you, that was the assumption, right.
Which we may need to sign, or you've already signed, I don't know.
He is in the process of sending me the actual proposal to sign it. Yes, I will sign it.
That was it.
One of three candidates.
Yep, no, you're in the right, you're in the right ballpark, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on then, TA search, um, no particular news there. The, uh, the job description is out, it's up, posted on the bulletin board as well and on our job site, on the, um, on our website. And then we're in community paradigm's hands to use their networks and hopefully get the word out and find some people.
And the posting closes Friday at three PM.
Um, that was going to be the, again, the same kind of thing to, at least, um, once they came in that they would start reviewing those as of the tenth, yeah.
Yeah.
But again, it will be open until they find somebody, the way I understood it, yeah. So we haven't gotten, last time I checked with them, they had, um, probably three or four candidates, two of whom seemed pretty serious and the others were just inquiries at that point in time. So I don't know if that's developed, they haven't reached out back, back out to me.
Well, yeah, I can, I'll, I'll, Dan, do you want to share that little tidbit that you felt?
Um, if you think it's appropriate, sure, sure.
Just for shock and awe.
Tidbits, yes, go for it.
Tidbits, so I, looking on LinkedIn, I saw that, was it Longmont or East Longmont? Was, had a, had a posting for an associate, uh, town administrator.
Deputy, deputy town administrator.
Well, maybe you should share it because your memory is better than mine.
Ninety-five to one oh five.
Pull it up.
Oh, yeah.
So my question got back to the salary range we're offering for the position, um, our.
We're waiting on the Collins report.
Yep, uh, I could do that for everything.
East Longmont is going to be a different challenge than Southampton, no, size-wise.
But it's an associate position, it's the part that I, I'm with the, three years of experience.
You're talking the, uh, the same salary ranges that we're putting out for.
Correct, so my point on that tidbit was if you look at the pool of candidates in this area, would you, you know, somebody may, may decide to be a number two for a training ground.
Oh, I see.
Come in as a number one in a training ground.
I got you, okay.
Right, if, if you're not a current TA, do you position yourself, well, maybe I go in as a number two and get two or three years?
Well, maybe forward that to me, Dan, and I'll, I'll pass the information at least along in terms of whatever you found. in terms of whatever you found there.
Yep.
I'll pass it on to Paradigm, making at least maybe reach out to. Okay. FY '23 financial closing update. I know things were moving along. We had a, a list of things that, you know, Bradley and Jen were going to do and by certain deadlines and-
Yeah, and, and the reconciling of the receivables is the last thing that needs to be done before Bradley actually puts together all the documents for the DOR. And Jen thinks they're close. So maybe if I lock the two of them in a room for two days, that'll get done and then Bradley can start on the, all the rest of the documents of the trial balance and everything else that needs to get done. The balance sheet.
Yeah. There was, I'm trying to remember what it was. The, there was something that he was able to submit already, was it?
Oh, God, did the, oh, God. CP2, yeah, I was going to say PS2 and that's, I knew that wasn't it.
So that's already gone into DLS or?
Yes.
Okay. So that's at least one step forward, maybe faster than we were last year, which is great.
Yes, Janina to help them with that.
Okay.
I just, you know, publicly, I think Bradley and Jennifer are doing an outstanding job. But let's go. And it's really, I mean, the two of them are working the fastest they can.
Yeah.
Right? They're both short, well, Jen's fully staffed.
Well, yes.
But she's in a training phase. I mean, so I get it.
Yeah.
So these other, the other things like the, the year-end cash report and all those kinds of things should be like the next steps of what they do or?
It would be all part of it.
Yeah, it'll be all part of it.
Yeah.
They had finished from what Bradley told me, they had, I'm going to mess it up, so I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say at this point in time. Yeah.
Now, wasn't there, I'm trying to remember, last year, wasn't there another scheduled something or other that had a deadline that we were?
Oh, the one that you always want to remember. The schedule, Schedule A.
Schedule A, thank you. And for all of us, enlighten us as to what that tells anybody? What is it about?
Oh, God.
Set the tax rate.
Yeah.
It allows you, it's the final step in order to set the tax rate.
Well, actually, that one, that one actually gets submitted after you can set, set the tax rate. But it, it is the final document that closes everything out. And it's the one that is supposed to be done by December and around January. If you haven't got it in, DLS starts sending you the reminder letters.
That we had it last time.
February, they shut off the state aid.
Yeah, they'll shut, shut off the state aid, exactly.
Right, yeah. Okay, that's the one I was trying to remember. Thank you. All right, so we got to keep an eye on that and hopefully we will not be too far off schedule on that one. Good.
Yeah, that's, that's one, once you've had the first letter that says, by the way, you need to submit this or we're shutting off your state play. You never forget the Schedule A after that.
Okay. Draft amendments on PQB rules and regulations. I know I had asked John today, and I think our last, last update officially on the PQB manual is, personal handbook manual is like 2017?
No, we did one, we took a vote in 2022, so I sent you the updated version today.
Oh, was there? Okay.
Yeah, I had to ask Robin for it, but I got it and forwarded it over to you.
Okay, because I thought we had made some changes.
And you didn't ask me? You didn't ask me? I had the, I have the updated one.
No, I didn't want to bother you. I was, I was asking the-
You don't want to bother me.
No, I was asking the TRPQB.
Believe. Anywho.
She's, she's got me on speed dial. So I, I would say at, at this point-
Good today.
We, when we meet next Wednesday, we are going to set the public hearing for all the latest modifications that came up. So any new modifications going forward, tonight forward, we'll have to wait for the next cycle.
Okay. Yeah, because there's two or three that I know you'd been working on at one point in time that we never really-
I believe those are all up there right now.
Never really finalized.
Vacation, the accrual calculation, the benefits for-
I know that there was some that the PPB had voted actually to move on to the public hearing process.
Yeah, and we're going to finalize that and set the public hearing.
Wasn't there one done, or maybe we already did it on working remotely or working from home or?
That's one of them.
That's in this one.
Okay, good. Okay, great. Wonderful. All right. Any other business that cannot wait until the regular meeting on the 21st? Good. Hearing done?
Motion to adjourn?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. I think really, I'm assuming we don't have too much information on anything under old business. I'm not seeing any, I'm not aware of anything new. Minutes to approve, we do have two.
Hold, hold, hold the line here.
What do we have?
Where, where, where's the list of things that don't get fallen off? Okay, I don't see it. Can we get an up, doesn't have to be tonight for the 21st. Can we get an update on the, on the board's request to engage KP Law with next steps on our cannabis story?
They are reviewing it at this point in time. They've asked me for the host agreement. And I've sent that off. And now they've asked me for some other information.
So, so is it, just to keep it all on, can we add that under old business? Just so it's sitting there?
Well, it's there. Community cannabis benefit payment use.
Commit use, that's what that is?
Yeah, that's what that was, yeah.
Well, no, it's not. That's, that goes back-
It's the usage, okay.
That goes, yeah. Kind of tied in with the opioid, opioid kind of thing.
Yeah, okay, so what do we want to call it?
Host, update on cannabis host agreement or whatever.
Cannabis host, host, host agreement, payments or something?
Where's our money?
Where's our money?
We want our money.
Yeah.
Show me the money.
How many sets of tires we could buy for the fire department?
I actually spent time looking at revenue today, so that's why I didn't bother you. And we have, the way the, the agreement reads, it's, it's the, it's the impact fee and it's the substance abuse fee thing. The tax is not, it's not called the tax in the document.
The tax comes totally separately.
But on our, on our, our-
Revenue report.
Revenue report, thank you. We have a tax and we have an impact fee.
Right.
Is there-
The tax is just like, we have-
It's the 3% sales tax.
We have a revenue item and it's meals tax.
Right, it's the 3% sales tax or whatever of there. So just to say that for 2023, as I'm seeing it, we had estimated $65,000 revenue. We are actually at $72,729.
That's the 3%.
That's the 3%.
That's not in contention.
I know. That's the 3%. The community impact fee is supposed to be $10,000 annually. And yet we have a revenue estimate of $30,000. So that's what I didn't understand.
No.
So some name is getting confused.
The impact, the impact fee theoretically, theoretically should match, be the same number as the taxes because it's also 3%. But we also knew when we were doing the revenues for fiscal year '24 that the possibility was that the CCC did go retroactive, which they did. So we wouldn't see 72,000. So we lowered it down to 30.
Chris, what, what did you say the, the tax fee was, 73,000?
About 73, 72,7.
Well, let's just say 73.
Right.
So that's 3%. So you divide that number by three, you multiply that number by 100. It's $2.5 million in revenue that's going through there. And they can't pay us our little chunk of change for hosting the-
Yeah, and so then the, whatever we were calling the impact fee-
The mere fact.
Is we've actually gotten one, one payment at $14,700. So-
So I just think for, for our little town, for that little shop in there that doesn't seem to have a boatload of traffic going in, they're generating 2.4 million in revenue. I can see why the city of Hoylake has 28 of them. Just saying.
But we, you know, so we, we at least have KP Law taking a look at it and seeing what our, what our chances are. Because we actually signed that agreement back in 19, but they didn't come, and it's a five-year agreement, I think, yeah?
Five-year agreement.
But it, they didn't, we didn't start it because they weren't operational, you know, for a large part during COVID. So I don't think they even, they didn't open the doors until like '21 or maybe, I'm thinking. So there's really only a couple of years, let's say, there's two years.[1527.02]